Good morning, everyone. I'm looking for an approval of the special meeting agenda. Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, on the question, I just wanted to give a few remarks. Wanted to welcome everyone to this town council meeting where we will discuss the 2025 budget. This is one of the most important days of our calendar every year as we create a roadmap of change, growth, and development this year for 2025. Today, we will listen to our CAO and our senior staff as they lead us through the process of their interdepartmental collaboration to create the work plan for the coming year, along with the expenditures identified by municipal staff. You will also see external services that require our tax dollars, fire, police, library, regional facilities, Envision St. John, Regional Services Commission, and tipping fees. These expenditures and costs are what it takes to run a successful and sustainable community. Today, council will assist in the decision-making process by giving direction and voting on aspects of the spending to support staff recommendations. Today's discussions and exchanges will be carried out respectfully and with appreciation for the hard work of our staff and for the thoughtful preparation of council. The decisions will be based on needs, affordability, sustainability, and predicting future trends. We must consider a progressive vision to moving our town forward to maintain the high level of service delivery balanced with affordability and financial capacity. We attempt to support long-term financial planning with infrastructure needs and funding requirements, both internally and externally, as our motivation for this council to be courageous in their leadership. Staff have put forward their efforts into every budget they create, and this one is no different. Together, we will consider proposals and plan for the future of our town. I also want to take a moment to thank everyone who put their names forward to run in this week's provincial election. It's not easy to put yourself out there, but you deserve a lot of credit for having your name appear on a ballot. I also want to congratulate all the winners who now have the responsibility of representing their constituents and delivering on their pledges. And don't forget about tonight's Dark in the Park Halloween event at the Arts and Culture Park, beginning at 7:00. Enjoy a spooky tales stroll with storyteller David Goss, social time with friends and family, and an onstage costume parade with a random draw of three prizes. Plus, a new creature will be on site for those wanting to capture that special selfie for the Halloween photo. On the question, it was moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Please vote now. Motion, carrot, seven, zero. May I have the treaty acknowledgements, please, and moment of reflection, Counselor Miller?
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispam Sis exists on the traditional territory of the Willis twig, Maliceet, and Mikmak people whose ancestors, along with the Pasmaquadi tribe, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight or today. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. And before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge and thank many of our staff members for being here this morning for the deliberations and hope that this is riveting. So right now, we have the proposal of the 2025 Town of Quispam Sis budget. Our town treasurer, who is online today, Krista Brandon, will provide an overview of the budget practice package, I'm sorry. Good morning, Krista, and welcome.
Good morning. Bear with me as I'm struggling to breathe. I just wanted to kind of run through the package quickly. So the index is included in your package. The first document that you'll see is the General Operating Fund Budget, which details all of the different sources of changes and summarizes our budget into internal and external sources. The next document that we have that goes from page two to four of the package is the proposed community service fee increases. We have highlighted the column, the 4% column, as that was what was recommended by Finance Committee to build into our budget for this year. The next, from pages five to 15, we have our proposed general operating fund budget, the summary by departments, so that lists everything by department for the organization on the general side. Next, we have the proposed general operating fund budget, the detail line item. So this is the summary of all of our different GL accounts and how they all roll up. Next, from pages 28 to 32, will be your five-year proposed general capital fund expenditures with the funding that we've recommended at the bottom of each of the pages. Next, on page 33, you have the civic relations that was brought forward at the last council meeting and was, as recommended by Finance Committee. Sorry. Next, starting on page 34, you have the proposed utility fund budget summary that details out all of the expenditures and revenue there. Next, on page 35, we have the proposed utility fees, and we've also highlighted that in yellow, based on the Finance Committee recommendation. So we are recommending that the sewer be increased by 3.96%, and that the water rates increase by 4.1%, and that's for the fixed annual charge as well as the consumption rate increases. Then, on page 36, there is the utility operating fund budget, the summary by departments as well. So we have different departments within the utility budget, and so that's all reflected on page 36. Then pages 37 to 41, that is the operating fund, the detail by line item again, same as what we reflect in the general. And then we have our, from pages 42 to 46, is the recommended five-year capital plan for our utility fund. And that, in summary, is the 2025 proposed budget package. We've also included, for your information, the two borrowing power spreadsheets. So this is where we kind of summarize and calculate, and we use this to do all of our projections. So those are included for you in your package for information purposes only. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brandon. I hope that you are very soon feeling a whole lot better, and I'm very sorry that you're feeling under the weather, and we look forward to having you back healthy again. So thanks very much for your time. Now, we have staff presentations, and first, we will call Ian Watson, our CAO, with opening remarks and propose 2025 general operating budget. Welcome, Mr. Watson.
All right, folks. Good to see you all. First off, it's a real opportunity to be here, obviously, with a storied tenure of seven weeks. It's me still learning lots, but we've been through a lot over the last few weeks and in preparation for today. So it really is an opportunity for me to say thank you for the opportunity for staff to present recommendations related to 2025 to you this morning. Staff have worked really hard to present you with responsible growth coupled with fiscal responsibility. And that partnership is something that, that balance between growth and responsibility is something you'll hear a lot today, for sure. But none of this would have been possible without the contributions of staff with whom and of whom I am very proud. And for Krista, especially for you, for Leah, and to Jackie, thank you. An incredible amount of work over the last few weeks to get this ready for you. As you know, the items that we discussed today have been reviewed by the Finance Committee and/or here at council and previous council meetings with a recommendation for them to be brought for you today. And it's fair to say that in the broadest possible terms, we're seeking modest changes in our operating budget and modest but strategic changes and improvements in long-term investments in capital that will help us maintain levels of service in our growing community. And throughout, it's fair to say that our recommendations align very tightly with both the strategic plan and the associated supporting plan, such as the Recreation Master Plan. And you'll hear more about those linkages as our conversations continue today. That said, there is an interesting complexity this year, and might as well call the elephant in the room out. We have no confirmed tax revenues yet, and that's just a function of the election timing, but it does make today's conversation a bit more challenging, obviously. So what we have done, and Krista can absolutely weigh in with details here as time permits, but we've made a very conservative estimate in the growth of tax revenue that we expect from the province. We've used that conservative revenue estimate to create a budget at the existing tax rate. And knowing that we still need to confirm expected revenues, our focus today, therefore, will really be on making sure that you're comfortable with the expenses that we're proposing. Following our discussion and any important adjustments you need us to make, we'll invite your approval of the expense side of the budget, conditional on receiving sufficient revenues to cover these through the tax assessment process. And upon confirmation of our tax revenues, we'll meet you with you in open session to confirm that, yes, we have sufficient revenues to match the expenses that we've talked about today, and to confirm your direction on the use of any resulting surplus funds. One bump the slide one ahead. There we go. Of course. Your worship.
I was just asked if questions could be asked throughout, or would you like to finish first?
Maybe opening remarks first, and I certainly have an opportunity to invite questions, for sure. Thank you. And fair to say, on the vision, if you want to back up just one sec, Chrissy, thank you, I would be remiss if we didn't take just a minute to ground our discussion in the vision and the mission of the organization. As folks have been working with me for a little bit, no, now, I am not the guy that's going to insist on a sing-song every morning and chant the mission and vision of the organization. That's not me. However, there are times when mission and vision matter, and I would suggest to you it's times when difficult decisions need to be made that the reference point of a mission and vision do matter a lot. So I would, I would just offer that what strikes me in the vision statement for Quispam Sis, beyond the fact that it's residents who helped create it with us, is specific reference to the natural beauty of the, of the community and the notion of exceptional services, amenities, and programs being available. So certainly a strong aspirational goal for us to be reaching together and something to keep in mind as we, as our conversations deepen today. When we hop over to mission, where the vision provides aspiration, the mission guides us with actions that are expect us to help meet that vision, the broadest roadmap that we have available. You can read it there on the screen, for sure, but I just wanted to zoom in on one aspect that forms a theme for our discussions today, and that is, and I quote from the mission, "A forward-thinking commitment to sustainable growth." And would ask you to reflect on that commitment as we get into our details today as well. Next off is just a few slides that reflect a little bit of historical background, and in fairness, I think this may have been from my own continuing education, as I learned the history of the Town of Quispam Sis and its, and its growth. But this slide provides details of our steady growth in general operating, the blue bars, and a little more variable experience in terms of our general capital budget and expenses. But if you thought there was some variability in this one, if you hop to the next slide, you'll see that the utility capital funding is much more volatile and reflects our need to complete both asset management and allow longer-term forecasting for our capital needs, both here in utility and back in general accounts as well. That said, if you hop to the next slide, it's fair to say that we are not alone. Quispam Sis is not unique with some of the financial challenges that are facing our community. Municipalities across New Brunswick, Canada, and even internationally are really struggling to ensure that infrastructure and other capital assets are maintained in particular. There's been some really good recent work done by Mount Allison Professor of Economics, Dr. Craig Brett, whose report is on the screen, who confirms the shortfall is real. And I quote from his report by saying, "A conservative estimate of the amount of infrastructure financing needed in New Brunswick beyond current levels is approximately $120 million, or 10% of current municipal operating expenses." That one struck me, I must say, and gave me pause for thought as we consider the balance between operating and the need for enhancement to capital and, and the preservation and upgrading of our infrastructure. From the same report, in 2023, over 80% of all municipal revenue comes from property taxes. So while we look forward to fiscal reform for all municipalities provincially to help offset this requirement with other sources of funding in the short term, we really need to carefully consider the merits of applying more property tax funding to longer-term needs than we might naturally think is appropriate or apt or fitting, which in turn will reduce our future borrowing needs and the costs associated with that borrowing, especially in future years as we see a significant need for capital expense. How do we stack up is the next slide, and you'll see that we're recommending no change to the current tax rate. It's the assumption under which our, our planning was completed. But I would note that the rate is significantly lower than other similarly sized municipalities in New Brunswick. And that's despite significant pressure to maintain a level of service in a growing community, one where more roads need to be built and maintained, where more facilities are required, and where more community programs need to be available to keep up with our growth and provide the service to citizens that we want to be able to provide to them. I would offer just a cautionary note here, too, that this tax rate is not final, it's merely the planning assumption that we used in our calculations. When we talk about our approach to 2025, these are themes you've heard from me before, that 2025 can and should be a year to stabilize, to protect, and to prepare the organization, all having links today to our proposed budget. In the stabilize section, this is about making sure we're making the best with what we have got now, clarifying service level expectations, optimizing existing spaces, and doing some policy work to make sure we're on solid ground in managing staff and our affairs consistently and transparently within the organization and for the residents that we are entrusted to serve. This is reflective of a philosophy of, we really shouldn't ask for more until we're sure. And we need to optimize our existing resources and be able to demonstrate that we have done so before asking for more. That's the stabilize piece. If we shift to, to protect, I would offer that we need to be sure that we have dedicated human resources to ensure the safety of our staff, for whom we care deeply and want to make absolutely sure we've taken every reasonable step to ensure that they are safe, whether they're operating a backhoe, working on a pump in a sewage lift station, working in an office setting, it doesn't matter. One of our hallmarks that drew me to this organization is the care that we demonstrate for our team, and this is one area that I think is really important to make sure we demonstrate to ourselves and to our staff moving forward. You've also heard this next one from me before, this notion of, of preparing for the future. And coupled with stabilizing and protect, we really do have the opportunity to prepare today for ongoing growth in our operations and for anticipated capital improvements in 2025 and beyond. In the short term, in other words, in 2025, this means work that is aligned with the capacity building pillar of our strategic plan, making sure we define service levels accurately, coupled with resources required to meet those service levels as growth continues. We also need to take a critical look at our facilities, making sure we co-locate services where appropriate, and that we've optimized the spaces currently available to us before suggesting new builds. We also need to finish our work on enterprise-wide asset management so that we can be more proactive with maintenance and replacement requirements, lowering the total cost of ownership of major assets and equipment, and certainly more to come from Gary on asset management today. Overall, we're asking you to make a conscious choice of maintaining our current level of service and operations while allowing for strategic investments to stabilize, protect, and prepare us for the future. So with that, and in her worship's absence, Deputy Mayor Schreier, I'm not sure if you'd like to invite questions, and certainly happy to answer those based on introductory remarks.
Impeccable timing, as always. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Watson, for the presentation, very well done, concise, and to the point. I do have, I just wanted to make one, make sure I have this clear. The tax rate's remaining at $1.27, however, you've taken an estimate of 4% of the assessment increase and added it into this current budget.
Correct.
So there has been an influx of money already put into this budget.
Correct.
And what does that total amount of money come to, that 4% that was added to the budget to maintain $1.27?
I think I'd need to turn to Krista for that one, for the exact number, and if that's an easy one, Krista, I'll turn it to you.
Krista, if you're there, would you please come on?
Yeah, just give me a second here. I do have that in my kind of remarks at the end. So it's about $1.17 million.
Thank you very much. That just makes it easier for me to understand the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Of course.
Actually, I'm going to just touch on the tax rate, too, because I do this every year, which drives some people crazy, but we've got to stop worrying about the tax rate. So we compared to Edmundson and everything else. That's fantastic. I just sold, I didn't say, we just sold my father-in-law, mother-in-law's place in Edmundson, brick house, four bedrooms, double lot, backs onto a park, on the market for seven months, $250,000. So the assessments in Edmundson are significantly different than the assessments everywhere else. So the tax rate is your budget divided by assessments equal your tax rate. So the only thing we can control is the budget. So if you want to do a comparison versus who we're comparable to with assessments, you need to compare against Rossay, which is not on here. Rossay's a buck nineteen. So everybody here pays taxes, doesn't matter where you live. So in the last two years, we kept our tax rate the same, but the average assessment in Quispam Sis two years ago was 18%, cap to 10. This year was over 11%, cap to 10. We're going to be 10% again this year, but it's a tax bill. So mine and everybody in Quispam Sis, depending where you live, but pretty much has gone up 10% a year, the last two years, so 20%. So, because our budget's also gone up 22%. So we only control the budget, not the tax rate. So that's kind of my, my comment. Having a tax rate there is just one piece of a missing formula. So you're missing the assessments, you're missing everything else, because that means nothing. I, I care what I pay, and I care, we control the budget. We don't, because we've gone years where we had negative assessments, and the tax rate went up because we still had to increase our budget.
Understood.
So, and we've had other years where the assessments were way up, and our tax rate went down because we controlled the budget. So I'm focusing more on controlling the budget, not trying to keep a tax rate the same. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Sure thing. I think that launches us into internal sources, if I recall correctly, at which point I'll stay, but if not, I'm happy to step down for a minute.
No, you go right ahead.
Fair enough. And Chrissy, I just realized that the clicker's here, so my apologies for bothering you. So this section of our conversation is just to take a little bit of a deeper dive into several sections of our operations, and certainly these internal sources are ones that you'll hear from many of us on this morning and probably into the afternoon. But my challenge for you this morning is just to touch on the general government pieces. So I'll hop right in there. Oh, hang on, maybe I won't. Okay, Chrissy. And next slide takes us to human resources. So this dimension of our, of our operation, this section of internal resources for general government, speak speaks to our recommendations around a very modest HR enhancement within the town. And already been discussed lots, for sure, but we are recommending a total human resource increase in 2025 of 4.5 FTEs, three of which are bargaining unit or unionized positions, and 1.5 of which are non-bargaining. And I'll just split that out for you, knowing that Gary may be able, may be interested in speaking to the details, but I'm certainly, and Cheryl, too, but I'm certainly happy to paint the picture here for you. On the bargaining unit side, the recommendation is for two full-time laborers and one full-time apprentice mechanic, which also, speaking of succession planning, helps plan for the future, for sure. On the non-bargaining side, we're hoping that you'll be comfortable with one full-time safety programs manager, which speaks to our commitment to ensure the safety of our staff in all settings, and 0.5 FTE of admin support that will allow us to reconfigure and optimize existing admin staff for payroll entry and finance in particular. We also recognize the need for modest overlap in key leadership positions when retirements are planned, especially those where recruitment from outside of existing town staff is likely. So we've embedded that as well as other requirements into the overall HR enhancement. And maybe that's a good time for me to pause just with respect to questions on the HR piece. I'm happy to take questions about that.
Would anyone like to comment on the HR? Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Watson. This just seems like the least wrong place to ask this question, maybe. I've been thinking about everything that we discussed at UMNB regarding succession planning and the, just HR generally speaking. We've spoken a lot around the council chamber here about the development and implementation for the benefit of staff success and for corporate values and tying a linkage to our strategic plan of performance review infrastructure. And I just wonder, it's a huge mountain to climb. There's nothing in this budget that speaks directly to the funding of, for example, additional assistance to our HR manager related to that, but I just wonder if that's something that has been considered or discussed at all, the idea of maybe contracting a second chirp specialist who could help with developing that alongside or, you know, reporting to our HR manager. We certainly want to see this, I think, be given the priority that it merits, while, of course, at the same time, understanding the dollar value of that. And it's probably not something that's destined for this budget process, but I just, the cycle, I mean, but I just wondered if you could comment on that, because I would think that that could be very helpful for us. So thank you.
I agree, and Your Worship through you to Counselor Bigger and to other members of council. Thank you for mentioning it. It's certainly on the radar. I think our proposal for the suggested staff position on safety coordination actually helps alleviate some of the pressure that's currently on our HR staff to manage those functions. So versus requiring or asking for your approval of yet a more resource specific to the succession planning piece and to the performance management piece that goes along with that, then absolutely our thought is if we have the safety services coordinator or manager in place, it does free up some HR-related time in order for those functions to be undertaken. They're already, they're already in progress, but to bring them to really to fruition is definitely an HR function, and I know that the HR team is anxious to get that done. If we can move a little bit of their work that's currently on the side of their desk from the safety perspective off to somebody who's dedicated for safety, and we're confident that we can get that squared away. Now, that said, if it was council's wish to add resource to expedite that effort so that it would be done sooner, then we'd certainly take council's advice on that one.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think it falls in here, but it might be, it's more around the engineering department and staffing, because it was my understanding that with the new downloading of services that we had more and more to do within the engineering department when it came to zoning properties and reviewing bylaws, and there was a whole gamut of new things that were going forward, and I'm surprised that there isn't anything in, for the engineering department for the additional of staff.
Thanks for asking the question, and certainly in consultation with the department, there's confidence that the existing workload can be handled. That said, you know, we're always open to the possibility that if there's pressures that arise within year, that we could come back with that for a conversation about that. But with respect to budget 2025, there wasn't a request specific to that need.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship. I'm just actually following up on Counselor Bigger's question in terms of timing, because, you know, again, we have been talking about performance reviews for quite some time, and I'm just wondering in terms of, I guess, timing of trying to get that cleared away before we actually add additional staff to the, you know, just because it feels like, you know, in terms of due process and, you know, just, I guess, you know, creating a workplace that people want to be in. I'm just wondering in terms of timelines and if you see that lining up, because, you know, again, we have been talking about performance reviews for the last number of years, so if you can speak to that, great, thanks.
I do see it lining up, sorry, Your Worship through you to Counselor Luck and others. I do see it lining up in that one piece that's important to us is to demonstrate that we care deeply about the staff, and by virtue of that, we feel that a safety manager is important. And that's yet another, I think, perhaps attraction to come to the town, to know that we care deeply in that way about our staff. But that said, the timeline for performance management is top of mind for me, for sure, and I know it is top of mind for our HR department. So, you know, certainly within, I don't envision that process taking a full fiscal or calendar year. I see it within this year, for sure, to get performance management up and running for all staff. Yep.
Thank you. I see no further questions on that.
Well, I think that's still me, then. So corporate services is the other section here that I would ask you to indulge me in here just for a few minutes, Your Worship and members of council. And there's three broad themes here that I'd just like to touch on. Functional planning, asset management, and some very modest changes here at Town Hall. On the functional planning side, what we're really wanting to do here is make sure we finish what was started in terms of defining service levels, because without these clearly defined and understood, not only internally but beyond, is really challenging to determine if and when staffing changes or other equipment changes are required. Our intent here is to identify key service levels and establish regular measurement and reporting mechanisms for them. So that's work that we expect to finish in 2025. Coupled with that is a review of where staff are working and reporting to work, and whether that configuration matches how we best deliver services. That may mean recommendations for changes to existing buildings, to co-locate staff and services that are now separate, or the addition of new facilities to allow for continued growth in operations, or perhaps none of the above. Perhaps we find that, in fact, we've already optimized to the extent possible. But we do need some outside help for that. That's not expertise that we have within our shop, so 150K is being recommended in this year's budget for that work. In asset management, and Gary will speak to this in more detail, but the intent here is to bring together all of the asset inventories under a single enterprise-wide platform that includes all significant town assets. This is really key. If we don't have visibility to this stuff, it's going to be really hard to get ahead of unplanned failures of equipment and ends up with us always in repair mode and never in maintenance mode. So certainly key to avoiding unplanned service disruptions, to multi-year capital budget forecasting, and to smoothing out some of that bumpiness that you saw in, particularly in utility capital expense. And we've allocated 75K in 2025 to complete that work. And finally, on this section, redesign or update of council chambers is proposed that would consider the layout of the room, staff seating arrangements, resident seating arrangements, and we're also asking for funds to support a very modest configuration change within the Town Hall offices on the main floor to allow office sharing and to optimize the financial services and payroll functions that go along with that 0.5 FTE of admin support that we requested. Both of those are with, of these ones are within Dana's area, and I know she'll speak to it during her presentation. So very high-level review of where we sit on the corporate services side. Welcome any conversation or question you may have about that.
Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Mr. Watson. It's more of a comment heads up, so when we get into some of the details about all the studies, I'll be questioning a lot of them, because it seems we do, Envision did a housing study, then we did a study for HAF. Now we're asking for another $75,000 housing study. We've done rink studies, we've done beach studies. So it seems we do study after study, so I will be questioning some of those, because it seems like very repetitive, and I know we've done different asset management, but I guess maybe I'm confused, like when we do them, like what's entailed, because we seem to keep doing more studies and studies, so just a heads up for the next few hours. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you. Just on the asset management, I, we have an asset management plan now. So what is it about the plan that we have now that's not, that needs to be boosted, or why do we need to add more to it? What's missing?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to Counselor, Deputy Mayor Schreier, and others. This is about bringing the plan to fruition. The plan is solid, there's no question, and the inventories are largely complete. What isn't yet there is the software platform in order to, and the overarching operational resource to make sure that we are managing these assets appropriately. So we're 80%, 90%, I'm winking over Gary here, but we're well on the way. It's about bringing it to fruition.
Thank you, and I don't see any further questions on that. We will move forward now for the budget on the Community Services Department, and thank you very much, Mr. Watson. And certainly, I just want to say that one of the things that really resonated with me was succession planning, because as Counselor Miller said, or Counselor, sorry, Bigger said, that was one of the keynote messages that came out of UMNB, and it's something that I've brought up different times over the past number of years, probably since about 2011 or 2012, and I think it is critical for an organization this size to be prepared. So thank you for bringing that up again.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Perton-Dixon. And I'd like to remind councilors that as we go through the budget, we are not voting on each of the departments at this point in time. We are asking, or I will ask for consensus only until we get to item number 36, after the treasurer gives her summary and comments, and then we will vote on the proposed budget through motion of council. Welcome.
Good morning, Your Worship, council. It's my pleasure to present the 2025 Community Services Operating and Capital Budget to you this morning. So since we last met, I wanted to bring your attention to a couple of items, one of which was the Para Hockey Cup that was played, a tournament played at the Qplex on December 3rd to 9th in 2023. We had an incredible event. It was our second International Hockey Canada event, and it was the first time that event was held in New Brunswick. We're very proud of that. There were 10 games played that week, and we had teams from, obviously, Team Canada, the United States, Czechia, and China, and there wasn't one day during that tournament that we didn't have people coming into our office in awe of what they witnessed on the ice. It was fast, hard-hitting hockey at a level, obviously, that was world-class and had not been seen before in our community. We had 100 volunteers. We had 3,400 people attend that event, and an economic impact, which was a study, based on a study completed by Envision St. John for us, that indicated that event had an economic impact of $635,000. We had a host committee that invested $42,000 in the boards for the players' benches and the penalty box with the see-through glass, as well as the artificial ice that was in the players' benches penalty box, so that the sledges could move throughout on and off the ice as part of the event. It was the most successful para event that Hockey Canada had seen. The engaged community, the athletes went to the schools, the ticket sales, they were so impressed. We had a triad event with over 50 people. People were waiting in line to get on the sledges and give them a try, and tangent with the athletes that donated their time. There was a coaches' clinics as well, off ice. And in fact, our host committee is going to be receiving an award tomorrow night at the St. John Sports Hall of Fame, and we're excited, we're excited to go in and receive our award tomorrow night. We also had some training that I wanted to share with you, because it's very important training. Our staff last fall, all our union and non-union staff participated in diversity, equity, and inclusion training at the Qplex. We had a professor from the University of New Brunswick in Fredericton come down for a day, and we talked about the importance of providing safe facilities, accessible facilities for our community and for our staff, that they feel safe and connected as well. So this work aligns with the core values of inclusion and connectedness that's in the Recreation Master Plan. It also aligns with our strategic plan and our guiding principles of equity and inclusion, along with the strategic plan and commitment to community. So under the guiding principle of equity and inclusion, there's a statement, "We foster a sense of belonging, acceptance, and inclusion for all." And later this fall, we're going to have another DEI workshop with the professor from UMB Fredericton, and that workshop, we're going to focus on belonging in the community, and this work, again, will help us continue to create safe spaces for residents and for staff. And that will be the lens that we use moving forward for all our facilities and our activities. And I'll talk about this a little bit more later on in the presentation when we talk about our facility allocation study and hopefully policy. So I wanted to talk about a few highlights from 2024 to kick off our budget presentation for 2025. So we recently completed a rebuild of the Dirt Chump Park off of Chelsea, and an onsite community session kicked off this project with strong participation throughout the process. The consultant contractor, Dig In, that worked on this project from concept to completion, posted pictures and videos on social media that had an enormous reach. This was a true community build. This year also, with our Active Transportation Plan that was implemented in 2011, we had our summer student into the school system and presented to 40 different classes. We had another 1,000 students, we're well over 10,000 students over that period of time that we have reached to discuss active transportation. And active transportation, like recycling, is a culture of change, and it takes time, and we've been working really hard, and I think have been impacting our young people in that regard. The other project I want to highlight is the Gondola Point Beach Accessibility Project. The pictures of the mobility map, mat, which has been laid out at the Gondola Point Beach, as well as the dog-friendly area in that space, and it's for persons with a disability or mobility challenges. As part of that project, we removed the asphalt leading, pathway leading to the beach. We've regraded it and reinstalled the asphalt, took it up to the porta potty outside, and again installed the mobi mat. As a part of that, we installed a trail counter down there. We know Gondola Point is our busiest beach now. Well, now, we have some data for one week, for example, and the end of July, and then the 1st of August, we had 1,847 visitors to that space. We also had a couple other projects that I didn't put post-pitchers of that I wanted to mention, but the Hamdenver Park is paved now, and as well, you know, we completed a study there, the master plan, which was presented at our last council meeting. We received $20,000 from the province in support of those two projects. We also installed two sunshades at the Qplex at the pool, which were very popular. We have Dark in the Park tonight, as the mayor mentioned. We usually have 300, 400 children attending that event, and as you can see outside in the park, it looks amazing. Our staff have done an incredible job with all the features there, and then one who works in this building sees the people that come here every day for the fall display, but also to take their pictures with the Halloween decorations, with the spider, it's amazing, and the skeletons, and it's created a wonderful ambiance, and as always, the community is very grateful for the work that they do out there. We also have our tree lighting coming up on Wednesday, November 2nd, or sorry, 20th, at 6:30, and then we also have our Christmas parade, and there's a reason I'm mentioning that, it's because we have a new date. It's November 30th at 6:00 PM. So I just wanted to share a couple of those items. And we're going to move into the general operating capital, but I took advantage of the slide to put in a few more pictures, just to highlight some items that you might not regularly see or be aware of. The first would be the new sponsorship at the Qplex, so our current canteen provider, McCluskey's, are now sponsoring the conference center. We have a wonderful relationship and partnership with them. The McCluskey Brothers are the sponsorship of the conference center now. The second picture is of the dressing room assignment screen. The second picture is of the dressing room assignment screen. It used to be a whiteboard, and people clearly have very passionate opinions on what dressing room they want. So they would erase it and switch it on us all the time. So we've added this, which is staff control. And this is in the players entrance in the lobby. And we're going to see a similar sign in the main lobby for the McCluskey Brothers Conference Center installed next year. And of course, we also have the new flooring. If you've been to the Richie Lake sessions, you would have seen the new flooring or maybe perhaps another event there. It looks really good. It's, doesn't have the bumps and humps that were in the floor previously. It also is easier to, to maintain and it makes our work more efficient in that space. And the next picture is of the Millennium Cycle Bike Park washroom. So there's a bike repair station and wash station there. That was built in-house with our staff, and I'm super proud of this project. They, as you can see, made this space look picture perfect. And I have a little something special to show you later on in my presentation that will highlight that space once again. But I would just say, well done to that team that built that facility. We also hosted a Recreation New Brunswick Ice Making Workshop this year at the Qplex. It's one of several we've hosted over the years. We've had Certified Pool Operator Course and the Ice Making Course in partnership with our Provincial Association. It's an opportunity not only to train staff, but to showcase our facility and our community to others that come from other communities across our province. So we'll highlight before I start the presentation of our general operating budget. As our CEO has mentioned, this is a maintenance budget. Our revenue finance has given us an indication that they like, that they would like to see a four percent increase in rates for our facilities, which was included in the budget. And we also have expenses. There are some variations, again, as mentioned by the CEO, that are out of our control, whether it be electricity at thirteen percent or insurance at fourteen percent. But the rest I will highlight for you throughout my presentation. So the first one is the Facility Allocation Study and Policy. That's in the Community Services Administration Budget. That's a one-time item. And that is part of having a healthy, engaged community that supports residents and feeling that they belong in public facilities. And it's to support our staff and their decision-making. We are recommending the creation of a facility allocation policy. And as we grow and change as a community, the demand for use at our facilities has increased. This policy will help ensure the allocation of facility use is of benefit for the whole community. So this would include gender, age, race, income, and ability. And this is something that City of St. John has just recently conducted their process. City of Fredericton is working on the same. And we're looking forward to having the direction of council. As part of the process, we'll be engaging the community. We want to know what our priorities are. And again, working towards making our facilities safe and belonging for everyone. The next item is the Hammond River Park Land Survey. We create, we purchased recently a piece of land that has doubled the size of Hammond River Park. And we need to survey that land because there has been encroachment from adjacent landowners. The next item is the Council Chambers Reconfiguration, and the CEO also highlighted that as well. But there is money in the budget for space planning as well, with the consultants determine the needs, a design and a budget for this space moving forward. And this space, and we were talking about this actually before the meeting started, about technology and the layout, this was built in two thousand and two. Technology has changed, so we really need to look at this space. And I know councilors have mentioned this in the past, and that's something that we plan on, on working with you on as well for next, for next year. And the CEO also mentioned the fourteen thousand dollars in the office, office space for accounting. The Treasurer is going to move to an adjacent office, and the two accountants will move into her, her space. And we will need some office furniture, painting, electrical work for that project. The next item is the landscaping for the Arterial Roundabout. And that, that is to hire a consultant to create, create a design for that space as well as to manage that project moving forward. We've had residents go onto that space and do it themselves, more than one. And as you can imagine, that's of extreme concern to us, the safety of being on that space. It's a highway, and there's the posted kilometers are eighty kilometers an hour for there. We know people go faster than that. So we want to invest when working with, again, with the consultants, determine what should be in that space and then create a budget and a, and they will manage that project once awarded moving forward. And we will manage that project with, in tandem with them. So the, sorry, Gondola Point Beach Master Plan, I went over that one. But that one is, again, working with a community consultation process to create a budget and concepts to improve, continue our, our work at that beach to improve accessibility. We believe that it's an important link to the Gondola Point Scenic Route, as well as the Trans Canada Trail, which is just up the road and starts off the Arterial by Matthews Cove. So we are quite confident that once we have concepts and a budget for the, for this work at Gondola Point Beach, that we'll have grant opportunities available to us. And we certainly expect that washrooms and parking will be of a strong interest to our community. And again, I just want to highlight that that beach is our busiest beach, and it's not only the beach, it's the dog park area as well. But our trail counters for two months in August and September, we had forty nine hundred users visit that beach. That's pretty impressive. And then our last item on the page is the eleven thousand dollars for the playgrounds for Gold Rush. So we have money in the budget, again, for community consultation, budget and conceptual plans for this play space. It was listed as a medium priority in the Recreation Master Plan. The current equipment was installed in two thousand and two. We have ten playgrounds, and most of the newer ones are, will not require refurbishment. So we would have half of those that are newer that won't require refurbishment. The other ones, and once they're refurbished, they tend to last fifteen to twenty years, and I think that's important to note. But these places are also building community. They are social connections, and they improve overall wellness, and I think they're important to our residents. The next item, Asset Management and Operational Projects for the Arenas and Pools Department. There's twenty five thousand dollars in the budget for exterior facade replacement for the tiles that have had water penetration, and they're chipping and cracking. They need to be replaced. This work will be done outside the pool season to minimize the impact of the pool. The next item is the pool repairs for piping. And that's in the underground tunnel at the pool. We had a pipe break before the season. We had pipe break during the season. And again, as asset management, we have to take care of our infrastructure. And we don't want to have a break in the middle of the pool season. That would be terrible for all of us. And we are, it's fourteen years old. I would like to mention, we opened in two thousand eleven, but the pipe would have been installed just before, before we opened. We have some smaller items in our budget, the Ice Edgers for both arenas, the Q M A and the Qplex. We are replacing the vinyl siding on the two retractable walls that are at the McCluskey Brothers Conference Center. And we are taking the ice out of the Qplex this spring. So the ice was out in two thousand twenty, and we are recommending as part of our preventative maintenance plan to take the ice out every five years. So we'll go and have a look and see if there's any cracks or spalling on the concrete. We'll have a look at the boards. We'll make some repairs as needed. Then we'll need to reinstall the ice. So we're timing this all around prom and graduation. So that obviously impacts revenues for the ice following that, for our hockey camps. But, so you'll see a bit of a decrease in revenue for, for that time. But again, this is taking care of our asset and making sure that we are staying on top of what may be underneath the ice, so to speak. There's also a water softener that was in there for twenty thousand dollars, and it's at the end of its useful life and fourteen years old. So I'm going to move on to capital items. And we'll see Cedar Ridge Playground is our first item at five hundred and forty four thousand. This includes a multi-generational play space with adjacent social and shade area. It's, and has an accessible granular trail that goes from the parking lot through to Pete Drive. We have entrance signs and landscaping as part of that. Reimagining this park was identified as a high priority as in the Recreation Master Plan. And it's a very important community park in a, the heart of a well-developed subdivision. As part of this project, we conducted a community engagement survey. We hosted an onsite feedback session. There were over fifty people that joined us on a Saturday afternoon. They walked, they biked, they came, they talked about this space, they met their neighbors, and they talked about opportunities moving forward to continue, continue that connection. We also, once we gathered their feedback, created some concepts and held a follow-up session here at the Town Hall to present those concepts before we went to council. And the results of those community engagement sessions were interesting because they aligned with our community recreation plan that was connecting residents to nature, celebrating your communities, inclusive and accessible in recreation capacity, multi-use and multi-generational. No new equipment has been added to this park in seventeen years. And we broke this project, as you'll remember, it was initially presented at once, and we listened to council. We saw your hesitation with obviously the amount, so we went back and phased that into two projects. So in next year's capital, you will see the addition of the dog park and a multi-sport court and the reconfigured parking. And the next item is the Darling Access Trail at Hammond River Park. So the red line that you'll see on the map is the five hundred and eighty-four meter trail. And the creation of this trail was part of our agreement with the previous landowner. This trail will be part of an A T network. In the future, we'll see this connecting to Millennium Cycle Bike Park, to Mia's Cove Park, as well as the Hammond River Road. We've been working with planning. As development takes place, we're working, looking at access off of Kenneth. Then, then the trail will also be an accessible point for persons that might have disability or accessibility challenge. They'll be able to get into the park through this route. The trail is going to be wide enough for a truck, and the, and the bridge will hold a truck because for the first time, we'll have access to the lower end of the park for maintenance that we've not had before. So our work is going to be so much more efficient with this trail. And it's also going to create an access point for that community. So they're not going to have to drive around to, to rain or drive to use Hammond River Park now. They're going to make the healthy choice through active transportation, and they're going to walk to this entrance off of McAlpine, or bike, whichever they choose to do. So again, as stated in our Recreation Master Plan, recreation facilities benefit the economy by boosting housing markets and property values. Trails in particular highly impact property values as communities recognize them as safe spaces to be active, healthy, and community-oriented. So much so that when considering where to move, home buyers rank walking and biking paths as one of the most important features. Our next item is Mia's Cove Ball Field Drainage. Infield drainage was not installed during the original construction of this field. And currently, we rely on surface drainage, wind, and sun to dry the field. This improvement will significantly reduce the time needed to open the field after a weather event. This work includes installing drain piping down eighteen to twenty-four inches below the surface along with coarse drainage material, followed by the infield mix. Mia's Cove is one of our premier fields. It has lighting and is host to a variety of users and tournaments. The next item is Wayfinding Signage. This was a takeaway from last year's budget presentation. We agreed with the mayor and council on the need for this signage. Our community is growing, and as such, the need for wayfinding signage has become apparent. So following that meeting last year, we created a, a working group within our own departments, which involved parks and facilities, planning, engineering, and works. They identified fourteen areas to promote in our community. And I won't name them all, but the obvious ones are the Qplex Town Hall, the Arts and Culture Park, Matthews Cove, the Skate Park, Millennium Cycle Bike Park, Hammond River, Richie Lake, et cetera. So there was a total of twenty signs, the five large signs, and fifteen smaller ones. And they will be installed in high-traffic areas. Again, I won't name them all, but they're, as you would expect, the Arterial, the Pettingill Model Farm, Hampton Road, Palmer Book, et cetera. The signs should last ten-plus years. The colors will fade, could potentially fade, or top layers crack and peel, requiring some maintenance, but not a total replacement. And the posts will last much longer, up to twenty-five years. The next item in the capital budget is a Field Groomer at fifteen thousand. This piece of equipment will level and smooth and mix, break up the hard infills. It reduces sliding injuries, water puddling, and weeds. Proper field grooming promotes surface drainage. This will allow us to get back on the fields quicker after a rain event. This groomer will be towed behind a gator and is portable enough to use a few times a week. So current grooming takes place once a month. Because it's such a large job, it involves two to three people, and it takes an entire day to do one field. So the new groomer would improve our level of service. And we'll be able to groom once a week, as it will take two, three hours per field. And I think you will agree that that improved level of service would be one that we would like to provide for our residents. And this is the same groomer the City of Moncton uses, and our staff went to visit them to investigate their use of this piece of equipment. And again, in hopes to create more efficiency within our department. So there's another item in your budget. You'll see six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Works Department. And the Director of Engineering won't be presenting that as part of his presentation. So I'll continue on with my next item, which is replacing the second condenser at the Q M A. This is, again, another asset management project for our department. It's the second unit. It's the larger one. It's twice the size of the one that was recently, recently replaced. It's come to the end of its useful life and needs replacement. It's leaking water and has motor issues, and it's believed to be an original unit from nineteen eighty-two. The expected lifespan of the new unit would be twenty to thirty years. The next slide, I grouped together a number of the items, again, most of it asset management. These budget items are all lifecycle costs that go with running a facility and again are part of our asset management program. At the Q M A, there's required modifications for the ammonia plant. This is required by our Provincial Boiler Inspector. So currently in that ammonia plant, we have two doors to exit. One exits to the Zamboni Room, and one exits to a hallway, and there's still other set of doors to get out. So for the safety of our staff and the contractors that do work in this space, we need to have direct access to the outside, as well as improve the ventilation. At the Qplex, we have door operators. And if you enter the main entrance of the Qplex, you'll notice that our door operators on those, both sets of doors on your way in. But on the next set of doors, to go from the lobby onto the walking track, there are not. So this, again, will increase the accessibility and that sense of belonging at that facility that we want to create, and we'll be putting door operators on both sets of those doors. The next item is a light controller. So the component, it's obsolete. The components are no longer available. And this light panel controls the perimeter lighting, and it was motion censored, and that's not working now. So our lights stay on, which obviously is not efficient. The Qplex Washroom, there are arena washroom replacements, so there's been some wear and tear on those press board countertops. So we're looking to repair the damage and water infiltration that's happened over time in that space. And cube number nine, which is the cube that's responsible for the floodwater for the ice surface, it was installed in two thousand and ten, and we've spent sixty two hundred dollars so far in replace, repairs this year. And the contractor is recommending that we replace that. And the next item is the methanol tank replacement, twenty-five thousand dollars. These are two large tanks in the refrigeration room, and at their end of, they're at their end of their useful life. We've replaced some smaller ones, but if these ones fail, we are very vulnerable. And the turnaround time for ordering those is eight to ten months. The next item in the capital budget is a replacement of truck one twenty-five, a three-quarter ton in the Parks and Facilities Department. So it's had, because this truck has considerable corrosion around the engine components, as well as the body and the dump. Holes have been previously repaired, and will be fixed again to ensure that it passes inspection and that we will be able to limp it along until the delivery of a new one in nine to twelve months. This truck, I should mention, is, has corroded due to, it's a, carries a lot of salt in the winter. We use it to, for all our walkways. So we have a high level of corrosion there with the dump and such. So I have to share up next, I'm sure you're all aware, I hope you are, that we'll be hosting our fifth Hockey Canada event, November third to the ninth at the Qplex. It's our first female event, which I'm really excited about. It's also the first time this event has been held in Atlantic Canada. We have eight teams, there's twenty-two games, we have a hundred and thirty-nine volunteers. We have an anticipated economic impact of a million dollars. And we've got sponsorship from a variety of organizations, large and small, from RDC, seventy thousand dollars, and Vision for twenty thousand dollars, the Superstore. Superstore's been involved in all of our hockey events. They have donated bagels, peanut butter, cream cheese, toasters, bananas, granola bars for every game and every practice that we've had for all our Hockey Canada events so far. So we're a proud partner with, um, the Superstore for our events. And these women that are coming here are going to be the top female athletes in the country. They, in the under-eighteen in hockey. They are future Olympians and PWHL players and our community is gonna be able to see them in their own, in their own backyard. It's pretty exciting and I hope you'll come and join us. So the last item that I wanna share, just hot off the press, and you'll see it coming on our website and social media, is a video that was created for the Millennium Cycle Bike Park and by our Parks and Facilities Department. And you know, you remember last year, we had one that was, uh, of the Qplex and the surrounding spaces. And there's money in the budget for another video next year for our trails, which will highlight the fall and, uh, winter season. I hope you enjoy. I hope you enjoyed that as much as I did. I think it is a perfect highlight of a beautiful facility in our community.
Certainly is. Thank you very much for your presentation and certainly looking at, uh, the repairs that have to be done. And we can't impress enough that asset management is planning for the future and it's, uh, what forward-thinking people do. And visiting other communities, having your staff visit other communities. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel here in Quispensis. We wanna see what works best in whatever community is implementing, uh, the tools that they need in order to keep their assets, uh, moving forward. The salt truck, the only question I would ask on that is-
On the what, sorry?
The salt truck, uh-
Oh, the truck, okay, yes.
Uh, is there such a thing as a liner that might, uh, preserve that for a little bit longer, you know, the body of it rather than, uh, having the salt corrode? I don't know.
I would have to defer to the fleet manager with a question like that unless you know, Gary. Sorry, Director of Engineering Works.
Uh, through your worship, when we look at our fleet when it comes to salt corrosion, uh, these particular vehicles that are being replaced now, uh, the corrosion is actually in the frame, so anything that we do now is not really going to do anything to the existing equipment. But what we do is when we are introducing our new vehicles, we're looking at underbody coatings and looking at, um, salt-spreading units that are, uh, pull-out or, as you say, a liner type so that we extend the life. But, uh, you know, up until, uh, a few years ago, the corrosion really is a function of, uh, how it's got into the body, into the frame, how often the vehicles are washed, things like that. And some, what we found is with a lot of the smaller, the one tons, um, is very difficult to keep them corrosion-free. So, uh, yeah, we're looking forward with fleet replacement. Uh, unfortunately, it, uh, is not really gonna assist us with anything that we have to replace now.
Right. Yes, and I, I wasn't meaning to put a new liner in, in the existing truck. It was just for future use and, uh, and certainly the Women's, uh, National Championship coming here, uh, in just what a week's time, I guess. And that is going to be very exciting and certainly once again puts Quispensis on the map with the Qplex, the volunteers, the staff and so forth. Uh, first ever held in Atlantic Canada. And as you've said, some of these women are going to be the national players that we're going to be watching on television in the next couple of years. So, thank you. I'm going to turn it over now for questions from council. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Oh, thank you, your worship. Thank you for your presentation, Dana. It's very thorough. I have a hard time with the landscape for the Arterial Roundabout and I hear you and I see it. And I go, wow, they don't take care of their assets like we take care of our assets. But, um, would there not be any room to persuade, persuade the province that that is a, their asset that needs to be maintained, mowed properly so that the, the weeds aren't growing so high that you can't see around the, roundabout to make sure there's no one coming? I mean, and I know we get the same old story, well, yeah, the province isn't gonna do it, so we gotta step up to it, but sometimes they have to step up to their, it's a safety issue as well. And so that, I was sort of surprised to see that. I'm sure you've had conversations and they haven't been successful.
Through you, your worship, um, if, if council, uh, deputy mayor will, will recall, the actual construction of the roundabout was a cost-shared item with the DTI. So as part of that cost-sharing, they actually created a, uh, a program of, of responsibilities, what they would do, what the town would do. They explicitly identified that the maintenance or changes to the roundabout landscaping would be a municipal responsibility since, because they want to get out of that business altogether. And, and you brought one comment, you say you, you can't see by it. Well, that's the whole point of the fact that the roundabout is raised, is to slow traffic down. If you, if somebody sees through that and says, okay, I don't see any vehicles coming, I'm gonna step on and go around, you're increasing speeds. So, so the, the whole purpose of, of having the roundabout up higher elevated is so that people can't see around it, so they take their time to go around it. We, we've got the, uh, the summer, we're, we're, we're waiting on the delivery of the rapid-flash beacons for the pedestrian crossings. Staff was in there this week putting in the bases. You notice there's been sidewalk additions to go up to the Kings Valley area. And, and so that, this, the, the summer, we'll see the completion of the pedestrian access. So we wanna make sure that that area is as slow as it can be. What, I think what the community service is looking at is, is, is there a way to make it more attractive rather than something that requires regular maintenance? Um, if anybody's been up in the Merrimachie, for example, they've, they've surrounded the, the encroachment base with rock, you know, something that does take a little bit of maintenance, but at the top, you get these high grasses that are natural, that don't need to be mowed on a regular basis. So, um, it's gonna be a combination of those types of things that will eliminate the need for staff, whether it's DTI staff or our own personal staff to be in that maintaining it, it's to getting a set program in there so that it's, it's there, it's one and done and now we can have minimal maintenance on it. Until we get to the point where we have a statue to someone in the middle of it, you know, that'll be, that'll be somebody else's decision. But, uh, uh, at this stage of the game, it's really about not being able to see- as long as it's not memorial, that's all, that's not- but it, but it's, but it is really a case of, of, of controlling the sightlines and, and again, it's not a point of seeing across it, it's making it pleasant-looking.
Thank you for that explanation. I wasn't here when the agreement was made with the province on, um, the roundabout. But it's just, like, I understand the height, but then the weeds were another six feet on top of that, so, um, yeah. Weed part. Um, just one more question. I, I have lots for the, um, community service, but the other one is about safety and I'm wondering about, um, cameras on our trails. For instance, the Means Cove, um, trail that connects on to the highway.
Matthews Cove?
Matthews Cove, exact, exact amount. So, though, that trail and are there any cameras for security reasons for women and people that wanna walk alone and regardless of gender, for safety reasons on our trails?
No, we have trail counters. We do not have trail cameras. We would have, um, cameras at facilities like the Skateboard Park, the Arts and Culture Park, the Qplex has twenty-plus cameras. Um, we would have cameras at, um, our, on our buildings basically in, um, Hammond River Park, I believe, and, uh, and the, uh, new build at, um, the Millennium Cycle Bike Park and I believe the Dirt Chump Park has a camera as well. We've got some vandalism occurring down there with the cameras in that space, but uh, I guess, um, my comment to that would be, we can do that. We just need the resources to then monitor that, like, where they would go, um, we'd have to be conscious of that and work with the police department to, I guess, determine. Because we have twenty-six kilometers of trail. So that would, we couldn't have a trail and we'd have to pick key, I guess, again, work with the police to determine key areas of concern if there was any. I haven't heard of any areas of concern. I know there's been, um, an incident that was occurred this summer, which I think you're referring to, but, uh, and we were asked for cameras, we didn't. And again, that's a kilometer of trail in there and where would we put that? Parking lot, I'm not sure. But that would be something we'd have to budget for, work with the police department and then of course have the allocation to resources to, uh, which is not easy when we do get asked for video footage from the police. It's not often, um, but we have, um, we've had people, once they know those cameras are there, they wanna know is there a son or daughter there or they wanna know. So we've had to create in our own internal, um, guideline working with our solicitor and the police that the only time we give up video, it's not because there was a fight on the ice or an incident on the ice is when it's requested, requested by the police department. But it takes a long time for staff to go through all the footage and then screenshot that and take that information and deliver it to the police department, so I would, I would just offer that. It's-
No, thank you. It, it really, thank you for your answer. I know it's more than just, it would take a lot. But I just wanted to, one, because I've had residents ask me and say to me, I will not walk alone on a trail because I'm, I, I feel my safety's in jeopardy. And so, um, and whether that's, the police have those facts or not, it's the mindset.
Yeah, I agree.
And if that's stopping them from going out and walking or finding other places to exercise, I guess, but thank you.
I hope not. I mean, we have trails that are very, I mean, we have trail counts that just came in. We have a another new, I think last year it was a hundred and thirty-four thousand and, and so far, we're at a hundred and forty-four thousand visits to our trails, people that walk by our trail counters. So our data tells us that people are using them more. And especially the QR trail, um, the numbers there are staying strong in the winter because we're plowing and sanding that. So I think people, there's not everyone, but I think they feel safe on our trails.
That would have to do with our growth as well.
It would have to do with our growth and then if I, if I, you know, was talking to another woman or myself, even I, I, if I'm going alone, which I always do, I go on a trail that I know there's other people on. I pick where I go, where I feel comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Miller, please.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm okay with, with all the Qplex stuff and all the QMA stuff, so we're okay there, Dana. We're good, we're good. Why, all that stuff. I do have a couple of concerns about the studies.
About the studies?
The studies. And-
That was coming.
I knew that, so, um, but I also wanna tag on to what Deputy Mayor Schreier said. So from my understanding, the forty-seven thousand dollars for the roundabout was also to pay a consultant and everything else, like, if we know the kind of Merrimachie has done what Mr. Loge is saying, how much does it cost to do that and just do that? Because they've done that. This is a study, from my understanding, this isn't to actually do the work, but to do a study to see what work we needed to be done.
This is to do the work. That money's to hire a consultant to create designs, to create a concept and a design and to contract the work, project manage that entire project. That start to finish for that.
So that's a start and finish. That's just not a, okay, that's-
That's not just a, oh, I think you should put some nice rocks here. That's not what that is.
Okay, but in my mind, if, if Mr. Loge's seen many things around the country and also around North America, if that's kind of the thing to do, maybe that's like fifteen grand, just do it. Anyway, so that one I'll-
And I'm, I'm not sure if they're on a highway. Uh, maybe they are, maybe they're not, but we have beautiful, obviously you've seen the roundabouts that we have in our subdivisions.
No, no, I know, but-
Our staff are quite comfortable, um, creating and maintaining those spaces. It's just when you put it on a highway with speeds in excess of eighty kilometers an hour, that I have, uh, a great deal of being, not being comfortable putting my staff out there. That's why we don't have those flower pots at, like we used to have at all the intersections. I just, I just didn't wanna put my staff in that position for their safety.
No, I agree with that, but to my mind, if, 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 if we've seen ones in the province that have rocks in that there, that they're probably, they've already done it, just put the rocks in and do the stuff.
This, this budget will allow for someone to come in and do that.
Yeah, I just don't like the consultant part, but, okay.
Okay, that's a really small piece. Like, is it thirty-five hundred, Gary? Thirty-five hundred dollars of that is consulting. The rest is
Okay.
project management and doing the work.
Okay, so, that one, thank you. Um, I will, I will be challenging the Gendola Point Master Plan beach, just because right now, we're into maintaining, this was the whole process, we're maintaining. We, we've also got some big ass on, on some of the recreation. I think we have recreation facilities better than none around here. We are, we are by far the top. Um, but we, in my personal view, we are failing in roads and sidewalks when I drive to other communities, so my preference would be to do what we have to, keep our facilities as good as they are. Um, kind of ease off on, on a few things and, and get the roads, because the roads, water, sidewalks were, were, were pretty bad. Um, so that's, so when we talk about the, the Gendola Beach, Boyne Beach Master Plan, that's just for a study, right? The nineteen grand.
That's for, yes, community consultation and then to create some concepts and a budget.
Yep. And the, the other one, so this will help Ms. Brandon when she's there. When we get to the Darling, uh, River Park and the trail, I understand why we're doing it, I get all that, but I also under, I also know that we spent five hundred thousand dollars-ish on that land thinking we could parcel it off. And because we did that, we didn't use any of the land for public purpose, we've got about a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars in the land for public purpose, so I'll be asking at the end to put that reserve over to capital reserve and then use that because that should have been used to purchase the land, so it doesn't remove your, your, your note, your, your one eighty.
The, but, that was three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the land. And it's, works out to less than six thousand dollars per acre.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think, I just, that's important information to share.
Okay, I don't know why I had five, but anyways, but we should have used land for public purpose to buy it, because that's what it's for. It, it has, just where the money came from to buy it.
Came from capital reserve, yeah.
The, the, so the, really the only one that I'll be challenging is, is, or talking about is the Gendola Point one. The roundabout I, I don't like, but if that's only thirty-five hundred dollars for, for consulting, that's, that's a lot less than I thought. I, I do have a little question though on maintaining for the Means Cove drainage. That's been like that for a long time, so it's, it's the first time that I recall talking about it. And that's an awful lot of money for, for a field. I know we have some wicked rains in the last few years too that have probably exasperated it, so I, I'm just trying to understand a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to put drainage, extra drainage in for something that's used X amount of time and we, we charge twenty bucks an hour or whatever. It, it's just, we've, it's just, to be a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is challenging. That, just to be ready.
As I outlined, it just, it makes our level of service higher and it, it takes less time, so we're more efficient in our work and and we're providing a better product for our community. But I understand your point.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. Are there any other comments or concerns or Councilor Luck, please?
I was hoping other people would ask, because I have a few. I was, I was ticking them off as we went. Um, I guess I do have a few questions and I can always pass the baton and then come back. Um, I think it's awesome, you had men- Um, I think it's awesome. You had mentioned about the economic impact study of um our last event at the Qplex. And I was just curious, was that economic impact for Saint John region?
Yes.
Or, okay, so do we, do we have any numbers in terms of the economic impact? I guess, because.
Specifically in Quispam sis, no. It's for the region. We host these events for the region.
Okay.
So um, we understand, we can't house, we have the facility.
Right, we don't have the.
And the volunteers, the host committee are all Quispam sis residents. Uh, and there is economic impact at our restaurants. Um, obviously, we don't have the hotels, so we are filling the hotels in the city for this upcoming event. So um, it's, it's really, they're all very much regional collaborations with um, with ourselves and vision. Um, uh, and the uh, you know, the restaurants and the hotels where they stay, so.
So it's more of a regional approach. That's perfect. Okay, thank you. Um, Hammond River Park survey. Now, I know that you had mentioned it was in the three hundreds. I thought it was.
Three sixty-four, I believe.
Okay, I thought it was four hundred and something, but uh like that was kind of in the back of my mind. I thought it was just under five um for the, the land. But wouldn't that land have been surveyed before we bought it?
No, it was not.
Okay, okay.
We didn't spend the, uh, it was, as you see, it's twenty-five thousand dollars for doing that after, as we did the water delineation study. And those are all requirements as part of a future development and obviously finding out. We did, we had the water. There was the wa- the mapping from uh Planning Department was to show the water, the indication um for that area. But when we had, we paid uh someone ten thousand dollars to come in and do the actual delineation, show that there was more water there than the mapping indicated. So, um, but I think, again, to highlight, um. There is economic impact to that space with housing and I truly believe this. And that Hammond River Park and the Millennium Cycle Bike Park in Means Cove and there's fifty-five acres just um that I'm aware of. Where the Ducks Unlimited Pond used to be, to live in that neighborhood and be able to walk to Means Cove Park. Walk to Millennium Cycle Park or bike or walk up to Hammond River. To me, those are gonna be very, not only have stunning views. But you're gonna have an amazing complement of amenities within a kilometer of your doorstep. And I think that's where we're gonna see the um economic impact of that land and that property as we develop it over the next ten years. And it becomes our Rockwood Park. It's, and it connect, we call it internally in our AT Committee, the trifecta, because we really believe. Um, in those three spaces and what that's gonna bring to our community and our planning department is working on acquiring the land. To make active transportation and accessibility um as to these spaces, the healthy choice, the easy choice, and that's through active transportation.
Okay, I guess I'll build off that, just because I, I'll skip over another thing, is um active transportation. I just wanted to give you kudos. I think it's awesome that we did use some of our summer students to go in and kind of start building that mindset of active transportation. Um, and then to build off your comment around, you know, building active transportation in that area. Right now, it's more recreation because we don't. To Councillor Miller's point, we don't actually have safe infrastructure, like, you know, that beautiful, amazing video. People are driving there with their bikes on the back of their car to use the bike park, because we can't safely bike to the bike park or bike to the Hammond River. Because we don't have the infrastructure, so I guess I'm just kind of reiterating, right now, it's more recreation. But I would love to see us as we move forward, you know, kind of forward thinking, is that we need to make sure that we do have safe infrastructure. So people can use active transportation to get to all these amazing facilities that we have. Um, so I just wanted to kind of point that out, because I do agree with Councillor Miller around, um, you know, kind of the, the roads and sidewalks and just. You know, multi-use trails that I think that's an area that we're lacking. Um, and then in terms of the master transporta- or master plan for Gondola Point. I kind of feel like, you know, we've done a master plan for recreation and I think at this point, um, again, to Councillor Miller's point. I mean, I think we could put our recreation infrastructure up against anyone. I mean, we have amazing resources and that's kudos to you and the hard work of your staff. Um, I'd rather see, you know, if we're gonna spend nineteen thousand, close to twenty thousand dollars to actually put it into putting in the bathrooms. Or doing something at it, like I don't know if we need another plan. I think by this point, you know, we have the, we have the um insights and expertise in-house. To kind of know what's next and, you know, in terms of, so I, I would hate to see us spend that money for another plan to say what.
I'd be willing to put that up and put bathrooms in next year.
Well, but I would, I would rather see. Yeah, if we, if we are gonna spend the money, I'd rather spend it on doing something that's gonna improve that. I don't think we need another study to show. I think we have the in-house expertise to know what's next to improve that facility. I mean, and we could do, you know, I mean, again, a community consultation, very informal one, that doesn't cost a whole lot just to say, you know, what do people want? But it sounds like just from, you know, the number of community um kind of engagement sessions you've had. Like, you have a, a good sense of what people are looking for. So again, I would rather see that money go to something that's tangible, that moves that beach forward. Versus a study to tell us what we need, because I think we already know what we need. Um, and then a comment on wayfinding, awesome. I think just having that out there is gonna make more people aware of the resources we have. One thing I would like to see, and I don't know if it's part of it, is um an improvement in the wayfinding in the actual facilities themselves. Like, I'll give an example of Hammond River Park. Um, again, we've done an amazing job. I've hear, hear great feedback on the bathrooms, the paving. Um, you know, but our actual wayfinding of the, the park doesn't even have kilometers on the map. Like, even if we could just improve, we don't have to do a whole new map system, but right now, it kind of shows the trails, but it doesn't say anywhere how far the trails are. So if someone's new to the area, they don't know if that trail is five kilometers, a half of a kilometer. So if there's even a, a way of just looking at some of that, where we can just accentuate what we have, like not rip it down and start new. But pick a marker and just add to that, so there's more information on the actual trail finding. Once you get to those locations would be really helpful. Um, and then I guess the other thing, the, the big elephant in the room is the um. Uh, where is it? The Cedar Ridge Playground. So my cons, I guess I look at. Um, we are spending eleven thousand, are proposing to spend eleven thousand for Gold Rush Playground, so, and that's to refurbish it. And then I look at the Cedar Ridge Playground and that's phase one of two. So we're looking at probably closer to seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, when it's done. It's not that far away from here in terms of like all the infrastructure that we're, you know, we have kind of centralized. And I think that that was one thing that um Recreation Master Plan also commented on, is trying to kind of centralize some of our, our offerings. So I'm just wondering, you know, it's, it's a big, it's a big ask. It's also adding to the infrastructure that we then have to maintain. So when you're looking at asset management, you know, we're really trying to play catch up in terms of the assets we already have. And now we're going to invest and do another big asset that now we also have to then update versus um still refurbishing it. Similar to what we're doing with the other playgrounds, but does it need to be as extravagant? So it's just, it's a lot of money when we're looking at all these other things that we are trying to accomplish. And, you know, going back to the original comments around, you know, thinking about sustainability and looking ahead and managing the assets we have. And, you know, doing those things really well, I am struggling with that cost when I think of all the other things that we need to be doing. To manage um the assets moving forward, so, thank you.
Well, I thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. And I, and I respect your opinion and the cost and I, and I understand that. And I would be remis if I didn't reiterate that, obviously, people move to our community because of our recreation amenities. Water, roads, sewer are critical and essential services, I feel recreation is. And for us to get fifty people to turn out to a community consultation session on a Saturday in May, it was cold and they came. And to see those connections being made and stories being shared about why they came here, why they lived here, why they're moving here or moving back, some of them. They grew up here. She's coming back to her home, this one of the ladies, some one of the neighborhoods that she grew up in. I, and it's, again, it is asset management. It's twenty-two years old and it's need, that space needs some attention. And we wanted to ask community what that looked like and what they saw, but in the end, it's up to council to decide what you see fits there. But we need to do something, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Bigger.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and uh thank you very much for uh another great report. Uh, I'm always so impressed with the uh, the way that you are able to outline. All of the sort of asset management related pieces in the community services budget. There are so many things. Uh, across so many facilities and so I'm always very impressed with, now, it makes a big shopping list, of course, which is lots of fun to stand up here in front of us. With, I'm sure, but I, it is something I'm really impressed with. And I think that, you know, you, you are charged with kind of maintaining stuff over a lifespan that. And the lifespan of different things is different ranges of time and costs go up and down for things. So anyway, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm always really impressed with that. And I do see, as the CAO mentioned about a maintenance budget, and I think that's been, I think you reiterated that as well. That is, uh, I see that at work here largely, you know, and so I appreciate that as well. It seems like that's, you know, coming down through. There's continuity there, I think, you know. At a time when we feel like cautiously optimistic about how the economy's doing and whatnot, we're concerned about it. But we gotta take care of what we gotta take care of. Um, I have just uh two, three points to make here, uh questions, I guess. I don't wanna go back to the same old, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but the landscape on the Arterial Roundabout, can I just ask? I, it's a very important point you make about the consultation fee is the smallest part of that. And generally speaking, uh, I'm in favor of anything that can make it look a little nicer, I guess. Um, but can I just ask, like, what drives even that discussion? Is it just complaints people have had about, hey, it's ugly? Is that kind of it?
Other than the asset management, all of our recommendations, the wayfinding signage was brought up by um the mayor last year and I think the deputy mayor. And so we, we take, they take, we take that away and action it. And then the same with um the Arterial and us finding out there was residents on there, mowing that space was frightening. So.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Uh, we were, but that's how, that's how much people care about our community and how well it looks and how we've just had such a high standard of maintenance. And they expect, they expect that, that so much so they're gonna take it on their own and they shouldn't.
It's like Arnold Schwarzenegger filling potholes in his neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I, you know, I, because I uh, I, I, I do, I know it's. You know, in comparison to so many other things, it's not a huge amount of money comparatively speaking. But we have to look at these things uh on a case-by-case basis and I, I just wanna echo the concerns, I guess, that have been expressed about that. I, and you mentioned about your concern about um the safety of staff. That's admirable, of course, and it's an important point to bear in mind. Um, but uh, I guess I, I have a hard time understanding how we can't accomplish creating a safe situation. For uh any of our staff to be able to address that. Can you just help me understand, like, how is that beyond our capacity?
It's beyond, we don't have the, there's a different, from my understanding, there's a different level of flagging that's required for a highway.
Oh, I see.
Certain class and Director of Engineering could expand on that, but we don't have that in-house.
And I mean, I understand.
We have to contract that out, which is part of that.
It's kind of organized chaos at a roundabout and stuff anyways sometimes, so I understand that for sure. And I've seen the comments on good old Being Neighborly Quispam Sis, which is a pretty ironic name for a Facebook group, I have to say, sometimes, when I look at what's on there. But I've certainly seen people level complaints about, you know, oh my god, a bunch of weeds and everything, but anyway. I'm just looking for data to drive this stuff, not, I used to work for someone who said, I need facts, not stories, you know? And so I'm just wanting to make sure that that's what's really driving that. The Gondola Beach Master Plan, um, that's not. What is the cost to put, we did talk about this recently. The cost to put washrooms there was. We were given some figure. Do you know that right off the top of your head?
Well, I can tell you that the washrooms for the splash pad in Hammond River Park were almost uh five hundred thousand dollars. So we would want to budget that amount for washrooms down there, because we also have flooding there and we'd have to make sure that we're out of that flood zone. And we build to that. I think it's a really important, I, I, I think that space, as I mentioned, with the, the number of people that are coming to that. For the dog-friendly beach area and for the beach that, and again, the uh. Corridor, um, the scenic route that we've been talking about, as well as Trans Canada Trail there, I think it's an important act of transportation uh route. And um washrooms and accessibility, well, we've put the Mobi mat in the, I think, I feel like it's the next phase of accessibility. Is to put a washroom in there and perhaps, you know, and I, I think we can still get funding for that. We can, not all of it, but I certainly feel that through our connections with um Trans Canada Trails. Potentially in the province, that we could access some funding to help us cover the cost of that, of that washroom.
And I, I believe that was alluded to when it was brought up previously, that there'd be, you know, as usual, a Herculean effort to pursue funding. Wherever possible.
Always.
Um, okay, well, the only other thing I'll just mention then is, uh, I just wanna talk about the um, the Cedar Ridge Playground upgrade. Um, it's a pretty big ask and as Councillor Luck points out, I mean, in the two, I went back and looked at the. Um, presentation that uh Mr. Scott had brought before us about it, over the two phases, it is somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred grand, all said and done. Now, that's not to say that it ends up being that. I get that. Things can change a little bit as it goes along. Um, you mentioned that it was identified sort of as a high priority in the Recreation Master Plan. Uh, and that it serves as a multi-generational play space. Well, when I look at the recreational master plan, uh, the Recreation Master Plan and the section here about population forecast by age. Twenty-twenty-one versus twenty-thirty-six, we see that the vast majority of men and women both would be within the twenty-five to sixty-four. Year age range. And so I'm just wondering if you can better explain to me what you mean by multi-generational play space.
Um, so, um, and, and actually, the demographics of the group of people that showed up on that Saturday was very much within that. So there was young children, there were also people that were retired with a, a dog that wanted a dog-friendly space. A lot of people are taking their dogs there, so that's with the dog, the dog-friendly area, Phase Two. The uh social shading, when we got there, again, throughout the day, people were making those community connections that we were talking about, that's so important. They were talking about coming back, why don't we, let's plan a picnic, a neighborhood picnic or a neighborhood community barbecue. And, well, we don't have picnic tables there. And so it's important for us to get out. I know that sometimes the study, you talk, we'll plan, not necessarily you, but the council has some struggles with studies and planning. But it's really, it's a great opportunity for your staff and to, and your consultant. We go in the community and they, we don't have the ability that they do to create. Um, the concepts and, and do, and do that kind of work. We also don't have the capacity to do that extra work, so that's why we contract out a lot of that. Um, we're very good at it. We can do it, but we just, unfortunately, we don't have the capacity to do that ourselves. We don't have the ability to do the concepts and things like that either, but um, yeah, it's multi-generational. So you're gonna see grandparents there, you'll see adults and you'll see young children. Um, it was great. We had a little boy come and had a handcrafted letter of what he would like to see there. It was very engaging and I really enjoyed the community consultation work that we've done up to this point. And I will say that I understand council's challenge with that. There's not gonna be a playground under two hundred thousand dollars anywhere, any, like, we've, as you know, the Qplex Playground was a couple hundred thousand. So was the one at Means Cove.
Right.
Um, I believe, and the, even the small natural ones, the two we have at Richie Lake and um Hammond River. I mean, they're expensive. We're not go, and that equipment is, as I mentioned, two thousand and two. So we need to do something with that space. And we went to the community to ask what they'd like to see. And we present that to you and in the end, as I mentioned, it's up to you to decide.
The, uh, no, thank you for that. I, and like you mentioned about capacity, you know, with stuff, having to outsource things. I mean, that's, as, as the CAO has mentioned, we're looking at increasing capacity, uh, building within our staff. And that certainly is something we identify, you know, I, I, I see that as a need going forward. Um, and when you say multi-generational play space, I didn't think you meant, you know, a chubby fifty-three-year-old like me climbing up on the monkey bars or anything, you know? That would be kind of, you know, I'd go out in a blaze of glory perhaps, but.
Take your dog there and sit and enjoy the space, have a picnic, you know.
I, I mean, I, I absolutely uh appreciate what you're saying about, it's the community, community engagement that was done in May. I'm sorry that I, I missed that. Uh, hearing back from people is important, but I, you know, do people understand, do those same people understand that we're talking about? A seven hundred thousand dollar park to go there. And those same people, I think, might express concern, some of them. About what the actual cost is if we pass it as it sits today, um, and compare it to other things. Objectively speaking, it's a marvelous idea, but I have a, I have a, a difficulty when I look at it in comparative terms. Um, and that's not to take anything away from the marvelous design and, and vision that drives it forward. But um, I'm looking for data largely, to the degree I can get my hands on that, even when it comes to the age of that neighborhood. I mean, Cedar Ridge is the oldest subdivision in all of Quispam Sis. It's sort of the, I think it's kind of the original subdivision in Quispam Sis. Pardon me? No? Okay, well, it's, it's an oldie, oldie but a goodie. Um, and, uh, I don't know what, if any, information is available to us about. Um, as a neighborhood, you know. The usefulness of a hefty ask on a park cost like this would be. In that community. My understanding is that there's a value in the Recreation Master Plan to create. Community-based parks so that no, we're not talking about everybody getting on. They're getting in their car and driving down to the Qplex. We want to create, like the Splash Pad was a good example of that. Creating these kind of community-based assets that people can walk to. And that people can get that sense of neighborhood. So I totally endorse that from that perspective. But I just wonder what data exists that. Uh, you know, I'm not talking, I don't know, census data, whatever, what data exists that says to us? That this is a high priority area for such an overhaul of, of a park. And so I, I don't know the answer to that, I. I, I, uh, but it leaves me a little concerned about the cost as it stands. And perhaps it's just something that needs to be done over. More phases or something, I don't know, but I, I, but I did hear what you said about. It's expensive, no matter what, you know, and I think about the Means Cove Park Playground. And I'm very impressed with that to look at it, you know, uh, and you say the cost on that was.
It's almost two hundred thousand.
Quarter million dollars or something, yeah, yeah.
And that was in an existing space too.
Right.
With the sand and the, so, so we didn't have to go in and, I mean, we had to remove the, uh, older equipment that was there, but.
Yeah, this is sort of a substantial. Re-envisioning completely, right?
Re-imagining of that space.
Okay, thank you.
Need to do something there and what that looks like, yeah, we, we want, we found out from our community what they'd like to see there. Um, to your point, I don't know the demographics of that area, but I can tell you, as I. I've mentioned that there's all ages that were coming in, some that had left that neighborhood had moved home.
Right.
Back because they grew up there. So there's a variety of, of people coming. And going out of the neighborhood of all ages.
Yeah.
Just from our experience, again, through that process.
Yeah, and I'm not in, I'm certainly not in favor of us, you know, aging out of playgrounds or anything like that. I don't mean to suggest that, I.
Well, it, it, it does influence who moves there. Firefly, when I came here, was just a patch of grass. And, and might have had a swing or something on it, but, uh, it was an older neighborhood and then once you start investing in recreation and amenities, it. It changes the whole dynamic of, of a community.
That's an excellent point, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Deputy Mayor Skryer, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have a question about the process. I wanted to, is it this afternoon, we'll get into more discussions about the user fees going up and what the, what percentage they're going up? Like, um.
That was discussed at finance, that was discussed at finance and passed along to us for inclusion in the budget.
Deputy Mayor, you had a replacement, uh, you were not able to attend that finance meeting, so we did have a finance meeting and it was decided at that time. What the rate changes would be.
I, I understand that you've decided what the, or it's been passed here to decide what the rate changes will be. But there, I have a couple of questions on the pickleball courts. Uh, I don't quite understand the, um, the rate change. And I, I was wondering if we have opportunity to look at that today.
Sure. I, I don't have that in front of me, but.
I just don't quite understand what it's telling me. I.
Oh, tennis and pickleball, okay.
I understand.
Our time slot?
Yeah, um, just let me catch up to you on my page so I can get it. Page.
So I will share, we have not charged for pickleball up to this point, but it was brought up at the last year's budget meeting that we should be doing that, so.
So, yeah, so that, my question is, when I look at the, the rates, I'm not questioning the four percent or the increase, I'm, I'm just. Clarification on what it says. It says, um, tennis and pickleball courts, adults, two hours per, per court. Is that?
For the season.
Per season?
For the season. So for example, if the Kennebec Cassis Valley Pickleball Club wants to book. Six until eight on Tuesday night for the season, they can do that with this process, it would be the same as the tennis courts.
I thought if that's every two hours, that could be quite an increase. Um, so that's per season and the same with the volleyball courts per season?
Yes.
They're all per season?
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification, cause I was looking at that and thinking, wow. And, um, the other question I have about is, um. The. The McCluskey Rooms, uh, that we're renting out. It's my understanding from what I've been told, uh, from people, that we have nothing in those, um, we don't provide anything anymore. There's no dishes, no plates, no cups, nothing. So if you want to rent the Qplex Room, you rent it and you have to bring everything in.
That's right.
With you to have an event. So.
And our, and our revenues increased because of that. We have more rentals, we don't have a preferred caterer. So, um, and we've renovated the kitchen space, so we took, we sold all the equipment that was in the kitchen. And, um, we use that, we have, um, some storage in there now. And we have, um, we moved some of the plates and things to other facilities, but. When, um, we removed the requirement to have, of a preferred caterer, we saw an increase in our rentals. So we let people bring in their own food. We certainly try to direct them to, uh, McCluskey Brothers, our current sponsor. Of that space as much as we can and, um, that's why, so we've had, uh, I have an increase because of that.
So, just so I understand, so McCluskey Brothers do not have to provide the, um, food? Or beverages or liquor license or anything like that?
Yes. So if you have liquor, they have the liquor license for the facility.
So you have to go through them?
For the, for the liquor license, yes.
But as far as food, they don't provide any food?
No.
So, um, okay, cause it was just so, but the cue, but the beach house is fully stocked.
Yes.
With dishes, so if I want to have a wedding. When I'm, um, booking my beach house, I'm getting all, everything to do a wedding. Well, that you would need.
Sometimes people prefer, they, when they hire a caterer, the caterer brings everything.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It depends, but it opens up the opportunity again for people that want to have. A reception, a birthday party, an anniversary party, what have you, pizza party, birthday party. They bring their, they just want to bring a pizza. Maybe if they want something more formal, then they can, they can, um, bring that with them or the caterer can.
And just one last thing on that is, um, the, the, um, public doesn't seem. At times, doesn't seem to realize that you can rent, uh, Means Cove, the outdoor. Um, eating area, cause there's often times or, or the, or here that you can rent that. I think just lately, somebody was saying, well, why? Why couldn't I go to the Arts and Cultural Park? Cause, well, it was rented out for the day. Is there any way we can make that more clear to the public, like?
What's on our website? We have signage and we have, uh, we put up signage, so for example, there are people that book the park regularly, so we know that it's out there. Um. We have signage that was on the site itself, for example, at Means Cove, that will say that this. Picnic shelter is, is reserved from this time to this time for this group.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. I didn't know that there was a sign at the picnic site.
When it's reserved, we post that, so they know, but it is again, a public park, so we want people, if you want to come and you don't want to, you can reserve Hammond River too. But if you want to come and know that you have space for your family barbecue or what have you. It, you can pay a nominal fee and it will be there reserved for you. But if you'd want to take the chance and come on a busy Saturday, it's not gonna be, most likely be available unless you're there early in the day.
And just one final comment, I do support anything that needs to be fixed. I think we take really good care of our assets and I think we have to keep on top of that. And to let you and the staff know is, I always hear great comments about all our facilities. People say they're superior to none. You know, like the Qplex is unbelievable and the bike parks, like the new dig and everything. So kudos to you and your staff and so I certainly. Support anything for keeping it the way it is and improving it even more. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Skryer. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, this will be quick, don't worry, Dana. Um, so on the, um, the playground, I just want to reiterate to, to all that are here. Is this will be a fully accessible playground, which is the only one we would have, correct, in the? Because the, the, if I recall from the, from the Cedar Ridge, that a lot of the stuff in there was, was much more accessible.
Well, there would be some accessibility features. Right now, the Qplex would be the only accessible playground we have because of the rubber.
Ah, okay.
Surface that's there.
But this would be the only community one that's accessible, so that.
Well, yes, uh, again, this, we would certainly have some accessibility component, components. There isn't a trail that would be accessible. Takes you through the property and comes out Pete Drive. Actually, the neighbors of that easement that we have, they're recommended that, which I was impressed with, so. Yeah, so they saw the need for that. And again, that's to make it easier to come down to the Arts and Culture Park. But they thought that would be a, a good feature to include in that, but we certainly. As I mentioned earlier, when we look at, um, facility allocation and use and the D E I training, accessibility is a lens. And inclusivity that we were always view with our. Facilities and our events moving forward, we're really trying to focus on that as a team and with our staff.
Okay, and I guess the, the last question, something to think about, that Mr. Scott, when I brought up when he did the presentation was. I think the consulting fees, I know that's my theme for today, but the consulting fees for this, to do it, was another like sixty or seventy grand, like it was ten or fifteen percent of the cost. Was added, like, that was added into this, so my question is. Since we've already got the design, we've already got everything else, couldn't this just be sent out as an R F P? And, and then managed, like, you, you give it to whoever. Gets this R F P and they manage it, because it seems we're, we'd be paying sixty or seventy thousand dollars for a consultant to manage it. I know they said that was just. Estimates, but it just seems that if you've got all the plans there, wouldn't it just be an R F P and then?
Well, we still need someone to manage that project internally, which we would have, so for example. It's real, we've had a project here, for example. Um, Chris Lawrence, who is our manager of arenas and pools and capital projects and efficiency, so. He managed the Splash Pad project and of the, the project here with the, um. Will not be done siding, which is hopefully coming soon and, and such, but he's also doing that on top of his regular. Responsibilities, so it's really about capacity and what we have. I know of just an example of those two projects have taken an extremely. Large portion of his time. It's a different world with the contractors and he's chasing them, he's calling them, they don't answer his calls, he goes to their office. To find out, when is our siding gonna be on? We, we tendered, opened that tender and approved that project in April. And we're still waiting for this work to be done and we feel like it's not gonna be done until the snow flies, potentially at the end of November, so. There are times where we try to manage those projects in-house with, between Barry Brown, our Parks and Facilities Manager, and, and Chris Lawrence, as I mentioned. Um, but I also have to be cautious of their capacity, so even if we hire a consultant, they're still the one that's managing that, so. It, it, it just, I know it seems, uh, that's an area of concern for you and I appreciate that. But I think that when we move forward with our functional planning next year, that we will need to have a look at all of this and. Um, at what, are we, are we at the point where, um, it, it warrants a staff position versus. Internally, or where, where we're at. So I'm just trying to be mindful of the capacity of our staff. They have the ability, there's no question. I'm just going to go to Mr. Watson for a moment.
Um, thank you, Your Worship, and through you to Counselor Miller, and, and thanks again to our Director of Community Services. I thought that was a brilliant explanation. I think all, the, the corollary that comes to my mind and to your question, Counselor Miller, is the opportunity would exist to R F P to include project management. But it does come with that additional risk of we are then one hand removed, or one step removed from the overarching oversight of the project. So that, that's always a balance. Uh, the project management fees in the construction world, I'm looking around the room to those that know a little closer than I, but I'm guessing seven to ten percent is not unreasonable. In terms of the overarching, you know, percentage allocation for project management. But could it be done in an R F P competitive environment that includes project management? Yeah, it could.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr., uh, Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, thanks for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Always exciting. Um, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Hammond River Park. Uh, I know that we've been, uh. I think we've been, uh, looking at, uh. Acquiring some more land to finalize the path around the park and that. Is that, is that one eighty-three including that land purchase or?
We own that land now.
Oh, you own it now?
Yes, we own it. The town purchased that land last year. Three hundred and sixty-four thousand, I believe, the treasurer can correct me on that if I'm wrong, but that was the Darling Property.
Yeah.
That we purchased, so this trail is part of that agreement, is the Darling Trail, is a legacy piece from that agreement. That will con, connect.
My, my understanding that there's another piece of, piece of the land that's being looked at now off of George Street. And, uh.
Oh, I think you're talking to a gentleman that lives down there?
Yeah.
I don't think, uh, we, I believe there's been a conversation with planning about that land.
Yeah.
Um. I don't anticipate that we're gonna need that land. I think we can, from the concepts that we've created in our, our master plan for that space. That, um, if you recall where the, the potential building was and there was a play space and parking. There'd be, um, the ability for us to go down a path as a user of a kayak or paddleboard or non-motorized vehicle. To have a wagon to take it down, we wouldn't require access to that, to that land. We can do it without, uh, purchasing any more land. That's not, that's not to say if he wants to donate it, that we wouldn't take it.
Yeah.
We would definitely do that and we could name a little trail after him.
I think that the land will be purchased, if not by us, by somebody else. That's all, that's my only concern.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any more, uh, questions or comments, so thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Uh, one just came up, just now. Just when I said there wasn't any more.
Um, thank you, Your Worship. I threw you to, um, a Director of Community Services. So I know that there's been a lot of discussion around, um. The, um, Cedar Ridge Playground. Um, and I know that in the Recreation Master Plan, you know, uh, to Counselor Bigger's point is, you know. One of the things that they really highlighted was, you know, they want kind of areas for connection and to build community within those areas, so it's been mentioned a few times today. Um, and I know that we did go to, you know, to do community consultation, everyone's passionate, and of course, I mean, everyone wants, you know. Um, you know, and when you start brainstorming, of course, you're thinking, oh, you know, all these things would be great, but is there any? Um, you know, again, looking at, you know, I'm just wondering if those people, you know, if we build kind of the. Not the Taj Mahal, but a fairly significant playground, cause we're also now talking about creating this like mini Rockwood Park in the future at Hammond River as well. And like, I'm wondering if, you know, if we make this into a destination playground, it's not just gonna be a community playground anymore, it's gonna be where people drive there from other parts and. I wonder if that neighborhood understands that as well as, all of a sudden, you know, it's not just a community. Park anymore or a playground, it's, you know, gonna be a destination with other people using it. And I just wonder if there's a way of accomplishing the goal set out in the Recreation Master Plan around. Creating a community hub, you know, with picnic tables and with, you know, fenced-in dog play area and all that stuff. But again, with, with a, a smaller price tag that still accomplishes that goal, you know, and I, and again, I appreciate that if someone was gonna ask me for. You know, kind of a brainstorm of what I'd like to see versus reality, because, you know, we have to pay for it, um, it might look different.
So if I could ask, what is council's comfort level for a price range for that project? If I knew that, I could regroup with our staff and see what we could do with that area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, knowing that it wouldn't be obviously what the residents have asked for, or we could take pieces out. We could look at phasing it in over maybe more than two years, but there's some lost economies of scale with that, so. If, if, again, if I know what council's prerogative is, we can, we can work towards that.
During the consultation, were there things that, you know, again, when you start prioritizing some of the stuff that was there, like, I guess it's hard for us to say. Well, cut this or cut this, because, you know, in terms of what came out of that consultation, you know, were there things that were, I guess, higher priority? That could be done versus everything?
Well, there certainly was with different, I mean, obviously, the younger people were interested in the multi-sport court, the. Every demographic was interested in the dog space. Because there were people, a lot of people brought their dogs. So I, it's hard to, I, I just think if I knew, if you're looking, are you looking at two hundred thousand, are you looking at three hundred, I can see. What we could pull out of that for that amount. We have the, the priorities, they're in the both Phase One and Two. And we know that a playground is gonna be, and they're spread out, so right now, it's an old, because it's twenty-two years old. That playground has equipment boxed in all over, so if you have more than one child with you. You, they play on different pieces of equipment, you're all kind of spread out, so it really needs, it, again, needs to be reimagined. So it really needs, it again, needs to be reimagined to today's standards. So we are not going to have the footprint ready that we did at Beans Cove, which again was about two hundred thousand. So we need to consider that, like honestly, there'll be nothing we, much we can do under that amount. So it's, I, I would, I'm not sure, I don't know what we could do with that. But if you gave us an idea, if you're still interested in, um, reimagining that space and us pulling together some pieces of that.
Right.
We can go back to our surveys and our feedback and look at that and then look at what would cost and get quotes on what it would do, what would cost to do certain pieces of that independently.
Right. What, um, like based on, you know, the refurbishment of other parks and playgrounds, you know, throughout the area? Because again, that's one of the things that we've said is a priority. What is kind of, if you looked at the average costs that we're spending in each neighborhood, like what are we looking at? Would it be two hundred, three hundred thousand?
Well.
Can I just hold that question just one second? I'm just going to go to, uh, Mr. Watson.
Um, thanks, your worship, and through you. Um, this is a, a great discussion. I think I would just, I, I'm just mindful of the notion that the recommendation is as it's presented. Um, and not to say that there shouldn't be and couldn't be debate about that, uh, and, and potentially adjustment to. But what I would offer is that based on the assumptions that we've made, we can accommodate what is being proposed within, within the budget allocation. Um, so it would, it would reflect, perhaps there'd be opportunity for, uh, a broader conversation, maybe after all, all your pieces are presented before you, because then I appreciate the, the comment, Counselor Luck, about where is the balance for, for Cedar Ridge uh, against other priorities of the organization. Uh, but just know that on the basis of what you've heard so far today, the proposal as presented can be accommodated under the assumptions that we have made for you today.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Counselor Luck, uh, did you want to continue?
No, that was, you were just curious.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I certainly enjoyed your presentation. And we're going to take a, uh, five, uh, Mr. Logge, we're going to take a five-minute health break.
A hard five. A hard five.
A hard five.
Welcome back, everyone, from our health break. Right now, we're going to hear from the Director of Engineering and Works, Mr. Gary Loge. Welcome, Gary.
Good morning, leadership members of council. Thank you very much. It's always good to come before council and get my annual ribbing about wearing a tie. But this past couple of years has been real strange, and I appreciate it again, council's indulgence in allowing me to take my role with American Public Works as their president. And quite frankly, I'm actually more often in a tie than I choose to be in the last two years. And so workdays without a tie is the abnormal, and this is the normal for me the last two years. So you get to see my normal attire for the last two years. As was mentioned this morning with Mr. Watson and Ms. Burton Dixon, that, you know, we're looking at a maintenance budget. And when we talk about a maintenance budget from a works perspective, it's not the literal term of maintenance. It's not the literal term of we're going out and we're maintaining the facilities and the infrastructure that we have. From the engineering and works perspective, what we're looking at from a maintenance is maintaining a certain level of expenditures to make sure that what we're doing is consistent with the level of service that council has asked to follow. And I'll mention that a lot when this, in my presentation, when it comes to level of service. You know, Councilman mentioned with respect to, you know, the tax rate and what we're paying and its assessment, but it also goes to the level of service as a community want to do. And it is, as he said, part of that formula. If you want a certain level of service, you have a certain tax rate and your assessment is a certain amount, it's a linear progression. If you want a higher level of service, regardless of what your assessment is, you have to adjust your tax rate accordingly. And I believe that's what he was saying, is we control that tax rate. What that does is then that, what it does is it affects the level of service that is being offered by the town. We have a lot of residents to come to us every day, and they appreciate the level of service that they pay, that we pay to them. They appreciate the fact that their snow is plowed on a regular predictable cycle. They appreciate the fact that they can come out, make a complaint with respect to a pothole, they know it's inspected within 24 hours, it's usually repaired within 48 hours, if not 72 hours. They respect the fact that they can flush the toilet every day, they can turn the water on if they're on the municipal system, they can save potable drinking water on a reliable basis. It's the level of service that's established by maintaining not just the tax rate, but then we go back to that assessment part. So now we have people that are willing to come to this community, they're willing to pay a higher level of taxes for that level of service. They're willing to buy a more expensive house because they're willing to pay that higher tax level because they're not, they're going to get that second level of service. So when we look at preparing our budgets, we look at that level of service. And we look at, as Mr. Watson said, we're looking at, okay, this is the level of tax that we're being presented with, so this is the level of service that we can predict for a community. So we've taken that basis when I was talking to my team on the engineering group, the works department group, and the utility group, to say, okay, this is the level of service that the community at council wishes us to pursue. So that's why we're seeing the rates that we're predicting, that's why we're seeing the costs that we're identifying. All we can do as staff is take those predictable costs and translate that into what can we accommodate with the staff that we have? Do we need more staff? Do we need more equipment? Is the equipment capable of producing, putting that output that we want it to be? And that's all gone down to the foundation of the document that we produced for council's review today. When we look at the budget that we're looking at tonight, this afternoon, we're looking at a budget that's in the range of $7.4 million, just for the works side, the transportation, environment development, building inspection, protective services. Seven point four million bucks is about 20%, runs about 20% of the budget that you see being presented to you today. And that's based on some service considerations that we carried through for the last few years. You're looking at approximately 191 kilometers of roadway, you're looking at new residential starts, 53 houses for 55 units in the last year. That translates into the message that people are willing to come here. They're willing to come here, build those expensive houses, pay the taxes that they are to get the service that they want to have, whether it's roads, parks, water, sewer, they're willing to be here. We're seeing new multifamily residences, we're looking at the density increasing. That's the, that's going to be the key component that we look at over the next little while to make sure that what we do for a level of service is spread out evenly and fairly. If we can increase our density, if we can increase the number of community services that were being offered to the most people at the most reasonable cost, that's where you're going to see our savings. We're seeing a community that has, that we're improving our asphalt ratings on a regular basis. Not too long ago, we were sitting at an average pavement rating in the 70s, now we're up in the 80s, and we're seeing less and less streets that are below those 60s. The 60 pavement ratings are those thresholds that we say, okay, is that, is that a level of service that we want to go to? And previous councils have said, that makes sense, we want to be no worse than a 60. As a most visual example, when you look out in front of us in Lending Court, that is less than a 60 pavement rating. And what we want to be able to say is, is that the type of street that we're comfortable providing to our residents? Some people will say, hey, listen, I like potholes, it's speed control. Some people go, no, I don't like potholes because it's damage control on my vehicles. It's that trade-off, it's a risk analysis that we take. It's that level of service that we want to undertake. But it's also to, to a couple of members of council mentioned this morning, just at the end of Director of Community Services' presentation, is it a phasing part? One of the biggest questions that come to the, not just the engineering side, but the community services part is, why does it have to cost so much? Why does it have to cost so much now? It's because the size of the project that we're undertaking costs that much. If it's something that we can phase, and council is willing to wait a couple of years and do something in phases, we'll identify that appropriately, and we'll project it that way. The Lending Court is an example. It should be in this year's capital program, it should be by its rating, by virtue of its rating, but it's not. It's in next year's street capital program because we have the potential to leverage work on the Hampton Road. We're going to be working on the Hampton Road that we're bringing, potentially bringing a water line down the Hampton Road, and in doing that, now we have the economies of scale to say, okay, now we can look at the Lending Court area and decide how we want to do with it. It's also building off of this document, the strategic plan document, that Mr. Watson presented this morning. He presented the first two components, the mission and the vision. But from a staff perspective, those are great, but we live off of the four pillars that are after the mission and vision. And those four pillars, and I think council is more than familiar with them, it's infrastructure management, commitment to community, economic development, and capacity building. And that's where we look at the operational size of the decisions that we make. When you talk about infrastructure management, we're talking about that asset management component. We're talking about the things that come into play when we decide, should we pave a street? Should we replace a water line? Should we fix a facility? Commitment to the community is quite clear, is that you're making enhancements that the citizens want to see, you're building on the natural strengths, and you're demonstrating them to that commitment. It also goes on further to say that we're asking them what they want to see, which builds off of the review, the studies, the engagement that we undertake. So the reason we're doing, you know, I've got a request in for a study for the asset management. It's not just the fact that we don't have the capacity to do in-house, but it's also the fact that we made that commitment under our strategic plan to ask residents and to ask specialized consultants to assist us to do that. So we don't take the request of making studies lightly, we understand the concern that council has. Consultants are, in fact, not just at 10%, they generally run 18, 20% for some projects. We undertook a lot of our street capital programs to do it in-house with our engineering team till we could recoup 18% of the investment in our street capital program and parlay that 18% into the paving of streets. We get to a certain level, we don't have the ability to go beyond that, so now we have to hire specialists to design a water line or to incorporate stormwater management, things that are beyond our capacity. And those are the commitments that we made when we look at the strategic plan, goals, and the pillars that council has adopted two years ago. So we're trying to live your document, we're trying to live our document. And I think that's key, that we want to make sure that council understands it's not just things that, as a staff, we go out and say, okay, we're just going to make this stuff up. I almost said something else. But it is something that we're doing to promote the pillars that you have asked us to follow. And so that's the framework that I really want to focus on when we look at what we're doing over the next little while for the engineering works budget. We're looking at programming for the winter and the summer, both sides, that's everything that we do, plowing, potholes, road maintenance, guide rail. Can we do it better? Can we do it more efficiently? Can we do it more effectively? Build in the capacity, do we have the people to do it? Are they trained there? Should we train them up? Should we diversify our equipment to do this? We look at active transportation, we've made the commitment to council and to our community that we're going to be looking at transportation with all our capital programs, but it's also looking at the level of service that we want to do and the authoritability of that. It's one thing to say we can have active transportation on the collector lanes, the main roads, leads from node, you know, a community playground in Seeridge to a community playground here to Minskova Park. But isn't realistic to say, okay, in the side streets where there's 10 vehicles a day, do we really need three bike lanes or two bike lanes or whatever? So it's that realistic approach that we've tried to take, respecting the fact that, yes, we want to be that community. I'll go off my topics here a little bit. In the last two years, I've been around the world, in my travels, around North America and around the world. And this community should not be ashamed of anything that we offer to the residents. We offer a service, a level of service that is consistent or better than most communities that I've been in. You're talking big cities, you're talking small cities, you're talking communities that have significantly more staff. But what they all do is they say, okay, are we prepared to live within our means? Are we prepared to provide a vision that we want it to be? If we want to be a green city, I was in New Trent last month, they've changed their philosophy. They say we do pedestrians, anything we do is pedestrians first. Secondly, it's mass transit. Third, it's regional transit. Fourth is vehicles. They've changed their philosophy, and they invest in that philosophy, and it's not cheap. So they've made that commitment. And this council is, has taken great leaps and strides, and that, when we see that, when we get to the street capital, because we've recognized that, and we said, okay, we want to see streets, we want to see sidewalks, so we've made that investment year over year over year. And that's why I say, we should not be ashamed of anything that we've done the last few years, because we are following the path a lot of these great communities are doing, and we're living it. So we're on the track, and congratulations to you all for that. The level of service that we've undertaken, we look at things like storms, winter storms. Last year, it fluctuates. Last year, we only had 34, well, only, 34 significant storms that, about 59 hours of that was fought during overtime. And we changed our structures when we fought storms a few years ago, where we actually spread coverage from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And now what's happening is instead of having a lot of overtime, we have staff coverage, and we have consultants or contractors that we've hired to augment it. So now we can hire the contractors as needed, they're called in on the basis, so we can work to that effect. We've taken, you know, over 100 culverts, driveway culverts. That's a big one because it's a level of service that I don't see in a lot of communities. Driver culverts repaired, after a driver culvert is installed, most communities, what they'll do is if somebody comes in and says, I'd like to fix my culvert, well, why? Well, my car bumps. You go there and the car doesn't bump. So now what we're doing is we're going in, replacing for aesthetics, somebody's driveway. Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to landscape my lawn, and I want to replace my culvert because I don't like the ends. Well, does the water still go through the pipe? Yeah, but, and we'll do that at no cost to the residents. So that's something that at some point in time, we really should examine from a cost-saving perspective. There's almost $100,000 in the budget with respect to driveway culvert costs on an annual basis. New installations, we're trying to, trying to, you know, trying to fix that, but this is the legacy items that we're dealing with. Well, it was always done this way, so those are one of the things that we really would be wanting, look at. Our Q11 system, council is very good at promoting people to say, go, have you put it on a Q11? And I must congratulate you all because your emails to me and my staff are getting less and less and less because you are saying to the folks, have you put it on the work order management system? And they are, and they're getting response. We've got over 500, oh, well, now, I checked the other day when I made this, it was 477. Well, we're 500 Q11 calls, work orders put through the system. That's everything, sign, pothole, anything that comes up. They're probably going to carry over about 30 of them next year. And those are the low priority ones that we will be able to get to. And generally, as a rule, anything that's carried over, they've talked to the resident, they followed up with that person and said, are you okay with us doing this in the spring of the year? They go, excellent, I just wanted it on the list, I just want to make sure it's being actioned. Asphalt has been, has been a challenge this year, we've only got about 490 tons down. Generally, we're in the 500, 600 ton range. And it, this is a capacity issue that we're seeing with our staff. Not that they can't do the job, but it's doing the job safely with the right amount of people. We're getting a lot of people, and that's why we've seen the request for additional full-time staff. We have a lot of senior staff with a lot of vacations, so if they come in the summertime, we can't fully staff two teams, an asphalt team and a culvert team. So now what we're doing is we're having to combine teams into one, so they're either doing just asphalt or doing just culverts. So we're looking to increase our capacity by putting it back to the two teams in the summertime. The other thing that it does is we've held off in a little bit proposing these additions because it has a legacy effect. It's not just a summer issue, it's a winter issue. But with the addition of the sidewalks that we're putting in, the trails that we're putting in, the maintenance that we put, now we have the ability to have the staff working year round, rather than just seasonally in the summer. Now we can actually keep them busy in the wintertime, maintaining roads as well as sidewalks. And that's why it parlay's into the additional piece of equipment that you'll see in the budget that being proposed a little bit later on. The other thing that will affect our level of service is the traffic studies that we're being asked to, the speed studies that we're being asked to do. The speed studies are not taken lightly, these are serious concerns that residents will come to us, concerned about the safety of the neighborhood, safety of their children. And we've all heard the stories, you know, I go walking and the cars are going 80 miles down, 8 kilometers an hour down the roadway, you get there, speed is not as bad as it is, and on the second half is, it's usually their neighbor that's doing the speeding. So it's a lot of it, it goes back to education and enforcement, and that's one of the things that we're trying to do. If there is a physical problem that can be resolved, that's where it comes back to the traffic calming policy, we get petitions for physical measures, comes to council as a capital item. So when we look at our transportation and development budget, we're really looking at that, like I said, maintaining some level of expenditures, trying to make sure that we're consistent. It's based on the similar service level goals that we've seen in 2024, and we've, working with our accounting group, is trying to make sure that we're tracking it a little better. So some of the variations from month to month have been adjusted to reflect what's actually happening. So realistically, when you get right down to it, when you look at the largest line item budget that you're going to see, like it's 13 grand for the winter snow contracts. The winter contracts are subject to a cost of living increase from 24 to 25, I think it's 2%, and from 25, next year's contract, you'll see, or the year after next contract, you'll see a 3% to get to 25, 26. We asked, the GIS group has asked to have ortho photos done this year, and those are aerial photos that we take in the region. We partner with St. John, Hampton, Rossay, the greater St. John area, and we have the aerial flown. We used to do it every second year, St. John backed out of it last year, so we're behind a year, and they've actually come back into the program to say, okay, we're ready to do it again. So now we've proposed this. There was some noise that the Regional Services Commission wanted to do aerial photos, they've, that sort of fell by the wayside, and they're defaulting back to the municipalities that we want to do that. The purpose of this is, is from a planning perspective, we can see what's being built, we get to see how the land is being used, we can see the conditions of the roads, the quality and the detail in which some of these aerial photos are being shot is astounding. It really frightens me, and I have to remember whenever the aerials are being flown not to stand outside, I get a shine off the top of my head, and they won't, that ruins some of the pictures. So we want to do this, this year, speaking proposed this year. The various equipment and vehicle costs are ongoing, as Director of Community Services mentioned, these are those consumable costs that you have no ability to control. Our fleet cost for this, for my division is almost $400,000, and that's really broken down from the insurance and the repairs. Fuel is the biggest one. And that shows that we are a service-oriented business. We're out there, we have to be, we don't get anything done unless we're on the road. So you'll see a slight decline in the winter, in the summer, a higher use in the winter because we've got more vehicles on the road every day. As I mentioned, the snow contracts are going up, and as Ian mentioned this morning as well, we're looking at salary adjustments that have been in alignment with the collective agreement. And as part of that discussions with the collective agreement with our union group, there was extensive discussions with respect to capacity, again, on our strategic theme, the capacity billing of our, of our community. You know, they're very aware that they want to do, they're professional staff, they want to do the best they can with the resources, but they also are two aspects that was addressed one this morning, is the safety component, but also the ability to do the job, not just safely, but the right number of people to do the job. And it's not fair for us to sit down and say, okay, I'm going to ask my works department to go out and patch potholes with undersized crew, just go ahead and do it. We do not live in those days anymore. I started 30 some years ago, and that was, that was the case. They would send a vehicle out and say, there's a pothole on the Hampton Road, oh yeah, go do it. Now you cannot do that. Now you cannot do that, even think about it. And we have to reflect that component. And for us, that capacity means, as we have senior staff, as I mentioned earlier, as they go on vacation, as they're available, if council wants to maintain a certain level of performance, that's going to mean we need to bring the people in. And we don't do it willy-nilly, and I'm sure you can all attest to the fact that we haven't sat here the last few years and said, okay, we need X number of people, and just ask for it. This is probably the first significant part, you know, real ask that's not related to illness, retirement, whatever, this is a straight-out, full-time ask that we're putting into council this year. Our lane marking costs are up, we've seen an increase in the cost of guide rail. Guide rails are one of these other legacy items that we could throw into operating, five, seven, eight thousand dollars, but once we get over $10,000, Krista and her team says, you're getting to the range of capital, you should be putting this in the capital program. So what we've proposed is a catch-up in the capital program of about 30 grand, we're going to propose it over a five-year program so that we can get all the guide rail up. And these are safety areas that, the guide rail is one of these things that goes in the ground, everyone forgets about it until somebody runs into it. But all it takes is somebody hit it once, and now you're into that 10 or $15,000 expenditure. What we're looking at is going throughout the town, proper inspection rehabilitation program of the guide rails in the streets that we have. The Director of Community Services touched on the electricity costs. I would love to be able to jump my prices up as freely as the electrical department does, 13, 14, 50%, but we don't have that luxury, but they do, so, and we have to pay those costs. And it's more reflective in the streetlights, you're increasing 35 grand, we'll see it in the utility department, those are the highest significant light item costs in our utility department, because they are electrical-based systems, but it is a cost of, that we see of doing business. And I mentioned earlier about the driveway culverts, that's, we're looking at about a slight increase of about $5,000. And for us, it's, we recognize that this cost component is one that, it's $95,000 this year, but it's one that we manage by limiting the amount of money that we spend in a particular year, rather than going, okay, we're going to do them all as much as we can, we just will say, we'll stop here, and anything that's not done, we'll carry it over, because of the nature of the requests. Like I said, some of these people will go, ah, yeah, yeah, it gets done next summer, it'll get done next summer. They just want to be on the list. When we come to the engineering and works side of things, environment development is a component of this, and that is, again, when it comes to the economic development, yes, we say ESJ has the environment, St. John, Enterprise St. John, whatever they call themselves now, Envision, the vision, yes, and it's always a case of what have you done for me lately? But for us, it's a case of, we have people that are circumventing ESJ, Envision, Enterprise, whatever they call themselves, coming to us directly. Jennifer Jarvis, you've seen at council meetings, had a call from an individual from, from one of the French-speaking countries in Africa, asking about a medical supply company coming to the community. So they said, they went right to the community, and she, you know, righteously said, listen, because he was looking for, you know, placement, assistance, housing, the whole bit, she said, no, you should be talking to the greater region. But we get those inquiries on a regular basis. And then if there's something that people come in to say, all right, I'm going to take a development, and I'm going to process a particular development in the town, it's housing, densification, whatever, we can handle that in-house. So there is a key aspect of development that still is held in the community here in our building. The municipal plan process, we see that $75,000 at council, council bigger, I think, mentioned a little earlier about the housing assessments study, $75,000 for that. That is a study that, again, I don't, study, study, some of those words get like, sound like dead last word, study, study, gets stuck in your mouth, but that is one of these ones that council recognizes, okay, we don't have the ability to do it in-house, we're looking at other factors, let's get that thing done. So that's reflective in the environmental development budget. We want to make sure that what we're doing in this particular grouping is also consistent so that we are having infrastructure and subdivisions built to our standard. So we want to make sure that we continue to focus on supporting the development of those standards. We want to continue focusing on supporting the strategic plan and the asset management plan, and I'll speak to the asset management plan a little bit later on. But, you know, we're doing those municipal plan reviews, we're doing the next phases of the different departmental plans, whether it's digging down on the RecMaster plan, digging down on the transportation plan, or digging down on stormwater, stormwater plan. These are overriding documents that, if you recall, when they're being presented, left a lot of things hanging, left a lot of things that had to be followed up on. We're following up on those recommendations, phased in gradually, whatever we want to say. We're looking at other supporting legislation to make sure that our building bylaw, zoning bylaw falls in line with it as well. The other thing that you'll see in this environmental development budget is that there's an increase under the planning consultant, the deputy mayor mentioned about a cost, the cost increases. The fact that the province has changed the regional planning model and requires the communities to have a certified, MCIP-designated planner, has required us to go out and hire a third party to provide that services. They've come back to us and said, oh, oh, by the way, our costs are going to go up, $20,000. So it's a $30,000 expenditure now. And that was one of the issues that we had when this was first floated to the municipalities was, you ask us to have these staffing, but we cannot control those types of costs coming back to us. And all of council has mentioned that at, whenever we've made presentations to regional issues. Yes, it's great to say this, but we're subject to your increase, now we have to live with it. And this is one example of, the consultant says, oh, listen, we're looking at in the costs for your communities, now it's going to be 30 grand. So that's a cost that you'll see in this particular budget. The, the environment development program will also look at the bread and butter of our community when it comes to lot development. We had, I think, around 15 plans that we've been registered so far, creating about 70 parcels of land. What that does is it means you're looking at, those 70 parcels may not all be built in 2025, but they're ready, they're development-ready, or they're, they're in the queue to be developed. We're currently living off of, or this budget year, we'll be living off of council-approved items from '23 and '24. So '25, we'll see the actual implementation of the buildings that were, that were proposed to council the last two years. So it's an ever-moving resource for us. We are actively looking at rezonings, inquiries to the town for townhouses, for condos, for apartments, and mixed use. We're actively engaged with subdivisions, creating single and two-family lots, and as I mentioned, the new lots that are being proposed will also ensure that the development continues, they have to have land for public purposes as part of that development, where are those proposals being made? So all of these things look to ensure that we have a geographical method to classify and track the, the development of the town. These are a couple of slides that I don't think are in your package, but I think the next ones are really an examination of, of samples of what we do. The GIS system is the backbone of our planning, it's the backbone of the asset management. It allows the analysis of any type of information that we want, you can link it to a parcel. So you can click on a particular lot, and it'll be that link between the geographic information and our records management. So now we have a document that is stored in the archives of the town, we can access it by virtue of the fact that we can click on a parcel, it will not just tell us the lot size, and the assessment, and the zoning, but now we have the ability through our GIS to say, oh, there was a letter of complaint about it in whatever, oh, they had a building permit application, whatever. We can go take it to the level of, we would say, oh, they've got a dog permit that was taken out, or they've got two kids that took swimming lessons. Now it's a planning tool that you have the ability to say, all right, this neighborhood has all the dogs in the town, we should put a dog park over there, we don't need a dog park over there, but that's the type of document that we're, or tool that we're getting into. It provides information on blocks or 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 areas of the town, as I said, that could be used for development. If you're looking at things like parcels, are they in a deficit for their LPP? The next slide there, that will give us the ability to say, okay, we are, we are there. We can take it to the point of saying, all right, you see the green streets? These are roads that we've done the traffic studies on. Now they are streets that have the ability to say, all right, is there speeding in this neighborhood? Does it require police enforcement? We're taking it to that next level with our with our GIS and our planning group. So so what we really want to do is we want to make sure that we manage our our information system to a point that it gives us the ability to not just work for the building permit side, but it's it's information for the community as a whole in all departments. With the engineering group, what we're seeing is that they are, they are, I'd like to say, the group that touches everybody legally, I know HR, I can't say that, but it's the group that touches everybody legally that they're there to help with stormwater plans. They're held to help with capital plans. They're there to help with traffic inquiries, traffic studies, AT, infrastructure development. So they they're a technical resource for all the departments. From the engineering department, we'll see two main items that are being proposed. We're seeing an update to the ortho photos as attached a little earlier. We're also seeing a shared purchase with our environment development services program for a lidar-equipped drone. Now, what this drone will do, and I'll touch on it in the in the capital document, really, it's it's for those specialized locations. Now we have the ortho photos that says, okay, generally, what are we looking at? With a lidar-equipped drone, we can go to a particular area. It gives us actually contours. It gives us the lay of the land projections. So now we can take it to the physical side of things and say, all right, if we're going to do stormwater management, it's one thing to see a piece of property on flat on a ground or a picture. Now we know that the ground slopes this way. We have to have stormwater management so to make sure that the person at the bottom of the hill doesn't get flooded out. So this is a next-generation tool that's being proposed to be shared between the engineering and the planning group. And and as I touched on, the other thing is we want to make sure that we continue to develop the subdivision bylaws. When it comes to the other side of things, the housing starts and the and the the building inspection component, these are in your in your in your packages and they're a little difficult to read, but the important part to read is the trends that you're seeing. What we're seeing to see is that there's apparently a leveling off trend for the building starts. And what that is is really, it's a it's a continuation of the uncertainty in the market. The what we've been told, it's it's the the construction costs, the interest rates, those are the types of things that have sort of stabilized. So what we can infer from this from a staff is, and we've said this all along, is that there's a there's a baseline demand in the town that you'll see all the time. And that's that forty, fifty housing starts that we're going to see regardless of what happens out there. It's when the conditions are a little bit better that we'll see those peaks. And I think what our staff has said to me is that what they're seeing is that these are the number of houses that the current developers and the builders put out to make sure that they have staff employed all the time, that they keep their name in the market, that they keep their their vacancy rate, you know, their their ability up and they can address it. So so when it comes to higher building starts, that's when you're going to see something that's going to be a driver. That'll be a reduction in the interest rates or a reduction in the construction cost. Or a couple of years ago, when the when the the urban group said that there might be an expansion to the refinery and and the canaport and all that stuff, the housing costs, the interest just, or the interest in the community shot. And there was speculation and there was a peak, a minor peak in some building starts. So that's what we're going to see. We're going to drive some of the building starts. But the thing to to the other interesting thing on the next set of graphs is that even though the starts are flat, the costs of these things are still going up. So our assessments, assess costs of the permits goes up because they're building, people are building houses of more value. They've either got leverage or they've got capacity internally to build a more expensive house. Or because we do base our permits fees on construction values, our permit fees will go up proportionally as well. So so now you'll see an ever-increasing revenue to the community, even though the housing starts are the same. So that's an interesting aspect of the building inspection group. We're really not proposing any changes to the building inspection budget other than there's some in-house training that we our in-house staff from a capacity building perspective, as they get more technically adept, we want to ensure that that technical capacity improves. So there's a slight increase in some of the training budget. But really, that's that's a sign of a good organization that that we value the ability to make sure that our staff is properly educated as we move forward. The animal control contract is renewed annually. We're at the end of our particular contract with NBSPCA. So before we put it out to tender, what we're going to be looking at here in the next little bit is going to be, is there going to be an easier way to administer this program? For the number of permits that were issued here, dog permits that were issued at the town office, there's an inordinate amount of staff time that's taken processing, giving tags, things like that. So what we're looking to see is if there's going to be easier ways to register pets through an online portal. Can we offload any of this to a third party if if one of our animal service providers comes in and says, listen, we'll do your animal patrols, but we'll also take care of your licensing. Is there a way to do that? What we've seen in our initial investigations is that doesn't necessarily mean that's revenue coming back to the town because it's such a tight cost line. It usually means that they can, all they'll do is lower their costs to the town a little bit because they are, they're going to take the revenue themselves. They're not going to say, okay, oh, by the way, we're going to split revenue with you because it's just not that much of a revenue generator when it comes to online pet registration. But again, when we talk, it's about a level of service. Is council prepared to say, okay, we're happy with the level of complaints that we get, we're leveled with, we're happy with the the number of of enforcement actions that happen. We're happy with the patrols that are being done. We're happy the fact that, you know, community services is putting out dog parks and that makes it a more pet-friendly, you know, pets are people too. It's a more pet-friendly community. So it's it's one of these things that it's a level of service question that we hope with the new contract, once it's negotiated, we'll be able to be able to carry forward. I was listening with interest when when the deputy mayor said we have an asset management plan. We don't have an asset management plan. We have an asset management strategy. We have asset management strategy and asset management policies that are in place, that are guiding all the departments on how we manage our assets. An asset management plan is after all the individual asset silos are compiled and you you have an enterprise-wide way to manage it, then you have an asset management plan. So that's the stage where we're at now. We've done individual silo or infrastructure asset class investigations for roads for our fleet, public spaces, water, stormwater. We have to see if the templates that we've created for these individual asset classes are sufficient to be used across the enterprise, across the organization. So can we take an inspection template that we use on the streets? Can we tweak a little bit so that we can go then into the Qplex and say, all right, we're going to inspect the AC system or the ice plant? Those are the types of things that we want to be able to decide. So the proposed study is really is is a preparation for that asset-wide, enterprise-wide asset management plan system. Are there pieces missing? I know that we didn't do major facilities in our infrastructure classes. It's a it's an extensive examination. So we would, when you look at this particular building, we have to decide, do we look at the roof as a as a structure? Do we look at the heating, cooling as a structure? Do we look at the foundation as a structure? Do we look at the walls as a as a structure? Or do we say we take the building as a whole? The building is twenty years old. It needs to be done. The the complication when it comes to asset management is the fact that depending on the cost of those different levels of infrastructure, it requires a different level of attention. When it comes to the Qplex, the ice plant is going to be a whole different way to look at it, the heating plant here for this particular building. It's interesting, I I, as I said, I've been all over the world this last two years. And this asset management is the one driving factor on all of the successful communities that I've been at. They're leading the way with asset management. They're leading the way with how they treat their classes. They're leading the way, and I hope Krista is still listening, with their financial predictability and how they manage those assets. The financial capacity that the community has is is significantly dependent on how well in the future you can plan, how well you prepare yourself for unexpected costs. When we talk about our particular asset management plan, we've got minor looks at the financial capacity for the different levels. We said, if we want to stay above eighty, we need to invest a minimum of two-point-seven million dollars on our roads every year. Two years ago, we said that. We have to update it. I'm glad we're we're moving forward. The target is for us is moving forward. But now, if we say, all right, in five years' time, we want to pave twice as many streets, which is a great, I'm not allowed to say it, I know, it's a it's a great, it's a great goal. If you don't have the cash to pave twice as many streets, it doesn't do you any good. Where do you get the cash? I'm not going to increase the tax rate, but if you have the ability to say, oh, this year, our assessments came in, we budgeted at four and they're going to come in at five, what are you going to do with that extra one percent? Let's throw it in reserves because we know we're going to need it in three years' time. It's my little plug for your future considerations, but but that's what what most of the successful communities that I've seen around the world are doing. They're they're not just saying, we live for now. We're we're living for tomorrow. And and what they're doing is they're taking their reserves and they're particularly with their high-level infrastructure. They're they're putting that into their asset, the financial planning of their asset management plan to say, here's where the predictors are going to be. We know that the this building is, that street is twenty years old. In twenty years, we have to replace it. It's going to cost twice as much. Let's put it in the in the line item there. Our revenues are this. Oh, jeepers, we're short this much money. That's what the asset management plan will do for us. That's why we want to make sure that we're on a proper footing when we when we take it. So that's the rationale behind proposing this particular investment in the study for for council as we move forward. So so your role in as council is going to be crucial as we look at the strategic plan over the next little while. It goes back to, as I said, a level of service question for US members of council. Are you happy with the level of service and the replacement program that we have now? If that's great, that gives us the ability to input into our asset management plan to say, over the next few years, keeping the same types of things that we have now, this is what's going to, we think it's going to cost, here's what you're going to need to pay for. So you 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 do have a critical role in what we want to do. Something as simple as what level of risk are we willing to assume? You know, if we say, well, we respond to a pothole in twenty-four hours and, but, you know, we could save X number of dollars if we respond in forty-eight hours. Or we plow the streets in a four-hour cycle, but if we go to a six-hour cycle, we can save a third of our cash on plowing costs. But now as members of council, you say, well, no, our residents are primarily, they drive the city for work. They have to be there on time. We want them driving on safe streets. We want the ambulances, police, the fire, public works are first responders too. The police, fire to be here on time. So yes, we want to plow on a certain cycle. That's a level of risk that you direct to us to help. So we don't do this. I don't present a budget for empire building or for my own gratification. This is, my budgets are presented to reflect your programming that you want to see. When it comes to transportation, part of the aspect goes beyond operations as the capital program. When we look at our capital program, as a rule, we we look at trying to get a minimum number of streets done, not just collective roads, but local streets as well. This year's street capital program, you can see, is about a three-point-six million, three-point-seven million dollar capital program. And it covers a range of of areas. It covers some pedestrian crossing that we saw at the request at the Hampton Road and the Gondola Brat Arterio. We were advised by our consultants, that's about a fifty thousand dollar investment. That is still subject to DTI. They haven't given us, we sent the report off and they haven't responded whether they will accept that recommendation or not. So that's a that's a sort of subject to request. We're looking at Millennium Drive, a carryover from Millennium Drive. I've had a couple of council ask why, it was in this year's street capital program. I've had a couple of council ask why it's not done. The, this was a street that we farmed out to a consultant because it was beyond our capacity. It involved relocation of a waterline, relocation of some storm sewer, some curb and gutter and and road realignment and some walking trail enhancements or additions of a of a of a walking trail so that we could take it along Millennium. Their initial design came back to us at one-point-two million dollars. We had a nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget, so we didn't have the cash to do it. And the last thing Krista would kill me if I put a tender out, only had nine-hundred-and-fifty grand and it's a one-point-two million dollar budget. So we sent them back to the drawing table to say, okay, what can we reconfigure to meet our budget? What can we do from an internal perspective to say, okay, what aspects of the waterline should or shouldn't be touched? What aspects of stormwater management should or shouldn't be touched? So they're doing that redesign. They're they're comfortable in that they they should be able to bring us, you know, in that million-dollar range, but still we didn't have the money to do it. So we we've proposed to to put additional cash in this year's capital program to add on to Millennium Drive so we can go. So that's where that, that's why that particular street is there. You're looking at a grouping of streets. We've done in the past where we take a bunch of older subdivision streets and we say, well, group them together to get economies of scale. That's what you're seeing in that Olympic Ambassador Cap and Court subdivision. That's a group of streets in that particular area that we're doing that for economies of scale. We're looking at finishing. We have a base coat down on Bradley Lake Road. So it, if council recall, most street construction is a base level of asphalt and then a seal coat of asphalt. You don't want to let it go too many years between. So this is the year that we would want to finish up the seal coat. It's something similar that we did to Brook Street last year, if you will recall. Cedar Ridge, Cedar Ridge has been skipped three years for asphalt. And now we are proposing it in conjunction with our utility capital program where we're looking at the water system. And it's a, it's a concept that I I understand, I I recognize that council want to have some discussion on. But essentially, if we, if we agree to proceed on the water on Cedar Ridge Boulevard, it will require resurfacing after the fact. And I have to, I can't, I can't do them in isolation. I have to show them in both budgets. So if one is changed, it'll affect the other. So that's why it is is one of these components that will require some level of council discussion as we move forward. It's always interesting when we talk about trends, about looking at the asphalt costs. Our asphalt is only one component of a street construction project, I've said before. Asphalt, as as our projects get bigger, as we get more capacity and our more size of our projects increases, the asphalt component drops from, say, a sixty percent of the overall cost to maybe fifty percent or forty-five percent of the overall cost. There's more gravels, there's more other material involved. So that having been said, we do look at our asphalt index as as a price. And this past year, we saw the average asphalt pricing, when we look at all the classes, seal, hand milling, things like that, we're looking at asphalt, average asphalt of about a hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a ton. We used last year, we initially started with a two-hundred-dollar-tonne budget. We went to a a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a tonne budget when we when we finalized our budget numbers. This year, we've retained the hundred-and-seventy-five as our budget number. So our streets are calculated based on a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a tonne for next year's street, street program. It's in discussions, we don't do this lightly, in discussions with kind of the contractors. Right now, we've got quotes, two-hundred dollars a tonne, three-hundred-and-twenty dollars a tonne. It's a time-of-the-year function, but but we're asking them, what do they expect to see in the spring of the year? We're hearing in the range of about a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars a tonne is what we're hearing from the contractors right now. So so what we say is, let's be a little safe and we'll we'll put it at a hundred-and-seventy-five, a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a tonne is what we've been used for the trends. Just because I know that question has come up before and I just wanted to make sure we addressed it to council. As I said, we're looking to make sure that we address all of our streets based on pavement ratings. We assess them annually, a third of the community every year. We assess the road structure as well. And a lot of, I I think it was mentioned that Cedar Ridge is one of the older subdivisions in the town. What we're finding is a lot of these older subdivisions, the the road bed is not the same as what what we require these days. It's not, it's not designed or constructed to the level that is required. And so what's happening is we're going in after the fact, having to build up the base, putting more gravels and doing more compaction on the streets. And the days of of, okay, we're just going to go in and just seal over top are are few and far between now. We're finding ourselves having to do a lot of of reconstruction of streets. And for that, what we do is we do a little bit of geotechnical work ahead of time, do drilling in all the streets that we propose to do in this in the following year. And then we can say, okay, this street looks solid. All we need to do is pad and pave. The street is garbage. We're going to, we're going to dig it out and repave. As I said, we do that mixture of streets to make sure that the the wealth is spread throughout the community. We also look at those communities and neighborhoods that haven't been touched for a while. And and quite frankly, US council are those grassroots people that reach out to you and say, hey, where's my street being paved? And we want to be able to say, okay, is there a special project? Where does it fall in the the street capital plan? That five-year, ten-year plan, ultimately, the asset management plan, as we say? Where does it fall in that particular document? What can we do to bring it up? Sometimes it's as simple as, yeah, that's assessed at a seventy or an eighty, but it hasn't been looked at for three years. So sometimes us by having the request from you, we can go out and do the inspection. All of a sudden, the rating drops because it hasn't been inspected in three years. So sometimes us by out, having the request from you, we can go out and do the inspection, all of a sudden the rating drops because it hasn't been inspected in three years. Now, we've been approached by consultants and I'm sure interview that have been to F F C M have been approached by these A I groups now that they can drive the streets with a with an A I unit on the truck and they can, they can catalog your street conditions, your signs, the whole bit. Um we've been approached by a couple of those firms to see, and at this stage, the size of our community is really not an investment that would, we would look at at this stage of the game, is we think we can accommodate with the people that we have got and the staffing that we have, and it's meeting our needs. Particularly where we look at such, if we had a bigger street capital program and we're doing more streets and and we're trying to get a handle on it, it might be, but right now, we're doing stuff in-house, I think we we can handle it, so. But it is something to to keep in in the in the top of our mind at some point. The Director of Community Services touched about the our capital uh program for the Works Department. These are immediate needs. We have the luxury in this office of of being able to say, okay, we've got lovely smelling drinking water. We don't have to wait in line to go to the bathroom, we've got a lunchroom, we've got places to eat, we're warm. If we're, if we come in from the rain, we can take our coat off, we can do this. They did, you know, my 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 Public Works crews don't have that at the moment. And we've learned some hard and fast lessons from COVID. We can't expect the crews, you know, you're talking to to come in at all hours and all conditions with the conditions that exist down there now. I've 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 committed to them that I would take this to council. I'd like to think that 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 same commitment will follow through from council is that we see that the value that they provide to the community is is one that we wanna reflect that in in the in the working conditions that they have. So what we're doing is we're proposing for a couple of things. We're looking to realign some of the workroom and 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 lunchroom and locker room areas to make it a little bit more user-friendly, to make it safer from a health and safety perspective.
Currently down that building, the water treatment facility is in the electrical room. I don't know about you, but I would, I went in there and I was, I was taking the pictures and I was thirty feet back taking the pictures. You don't wanna mix water and electricity. And and the thing about it, it was fine when it was a one-bay garage and that's where it was. Now we've got five bays, the panels are bigger, more power going through those things, three, three-phase power, three-phase power. We have to adjust where that water treatment is being placed. And we have to also be able to properly treat the water rather than just, okay, we're gonna run through a through a water softener system. Now we have to look at the root cause. It's it's high manganese, high iron concentration due to the proximity to the marsh down through there. Mud Mud Creek, I'm sure Counselor Thompson, you might have a little bit of challenge with with your water from your living down that area. But we're looking at it on a bigger scale. We've got a higher draw down through there. So our water quality is one that's not just affects the the potability of it, but it also affects our ability to use it for, we can't u- we cannot use the well water for brine production. That is, if we wanna put a liquid salt solution on the road, we can't use our well in the brine tanks to mix the salt to spread on the roads because the water chemistry doesn't react properly with the salt. So we actually have to import water with with Kevin Richardson's trucks um from from uh from their spring to be able to put it in the brine tanks. So something as simple as that, from our operational perspective, we wanna make sure that we're looking at the water treatment capacity and and our ability to do that. So that's why we're combining it all together as our immediate needs for that particular facility. That's not to say that we're we're doing work that does not, is being wasted. As council will recall, we're doing a needs assessment for the the organization as a whole, the operations as a whole. This, this is with the assumption that this particular building is gonna continue to be used for some aspect of the works uh function and it's not gonna be discontinued. So what we're looking at is, as we expand our needs, what else are we gonna do? What else do we need to make sure that we can do the proper job? So this is not a lost investment. This is a continued investment in our in our facilities and our staff. Um from a transportation perspective, the other thing that we get into our similar to Dana, those 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 fleet and and work uh equipment items. Uh we're looking at, you know, in the in the works uh, in the engineering, building inspection, environment development services, we're looking at a at a at a fleet vehicle. You know, there are about nine vehicles in that department grouping and we're trying to do them every, you know, they got a fifteen-year lifespan. We're trying to do them every other year. Um this is the schedule for this particular one. The plow fleet, we're looking at a new snow plow replacement, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Again, the plow fleet, we've got eight plow trucks, they are on a ten-year replacement cycle. Um if council will recall, a couple of years ago, we actually added by two because we were that far behind. And what we're trying to do is get back onto that cycle so that we can get our plows back to a proper replacement. We're looking at uh the ability to safely ditch um uh areas and and one of the biggest uh work order requests that we've seen come lately is the uh the ditches are being overrun with alders and bushes. And what we're proposing is the addition of a of a bush cutting head for our rubber tired excavator. Um now we have the ability now to go with this particular piece of equipment, go through the ditches with a flagging crew as opposed to a full five or six-person crew, flaggers, chainsaw, bush saws, weed backers, the whole bit. Now you've seen them on the highway, the big machines go through, it's mulched, left in sight and actually serves as a bit of a of a weed retardant. So the 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 engineer or the works crews proposed this this past year and I brought it forward as a budget item. Our growth is one that when it comes to sidewalks, our sidewalks are increasing. We wanna make sure that our sidewalks, our cycle is done consistently, the same as our streets. Last year, we uh we acknowledged that sidewalks were not as done as timely as the roads were. There were some situations where we actually had to go back afterwards and and plow some sidewalks. Fortunately, a snow day is a no-school day, so that gives us a little bit of leeway. But um we're proposing an additional sidewalk unit to make sure that we can get out on the streets uh of the sidewalks in a timely fashion so that we can not just keep up with the growth of the community and the sidewalks and the trails that we have, but also make sure that they're um consistent with the street paving program that we've got as well. Uh other things you'll look at is like a wear and tear, uh heavy-duty plate compactor, those things, you see them, they bounce all over the place. They're lucky they stayed together as long as they do, but they do have to be replaced and it's a cost of doing business for us. It's not something that we can rent, it would be more costly to rent it as we needed to purchase it outright. And so that's why we're seeing it on on this particular uh program. The uh the other item that we've got on through there is the uh the LiDAR-capable drones, I touched on a little earlier. Our stormwater uh program, the grouping of local improvement, uh the various drainage projects, the guide rail specs, um that's about a two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar, it's it's the next one there, Kristy, it's the uh the the two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar grouping. What we're seeing is that there's becoming less and less uh demand for the local improvement side, that is the aesthetic side of a local drainage. And more uh calls about um significant drainage issues that that as we s- we can, Donald Trump's not in the room, that climate change is making real, um that uh climate change is happening and we have to make sure that our infrastructure is is sized appropriately. So so we've seen a slight increase in that proposed request. And and uh as you all know, as I touched on a little earlier, when it comes to traffic, traffic calming, that's one of the biggest questions that we get on a regular basis about speeding and we wanna make sure that we uh reflect uh that in our our capital program. That's not just uh traffic calming, pedestrian access for the active transportation, those rapid flash beacons uh that we use at high uh crosswalks, those are incorporated in this budget. This year, we've got uh eight sets, they are in transit, Counselor Luck will be happy to hear that uh four of those sets are allocated for the roundabout on the Arterio. They've been in, we've been waiting for them for over a couple of, a couple of months now. Um and so once we get those, we will finish the the painting and the uh the alignment of that particular roundabout and for pedestrian access to make sure it's as safe as it can be with signage, rapid flash beacons and paint all at the same time. We really didn't feel comfortable in putting them one at a time and and also giving people a false sense of security. But that's the example of the things that we put in this traffic calming budget when it gets right down to it. If there are specific street programs that call for a um a rapid flash beacon or a crossing adjustment, we will incorporate that in that program. So if if a street capital program says, okay, we're gonna pave this and we're gonna do an enhanced crosswalk, rather than putting it in our our traffic calming budget, we'll put it in that particular street program, so you'll see that that way. I've talked, I've drank a little bit of water, expounded on you, showed off my fancy tie and suit. Uh it's time for your questions if you have any, Your Worship. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loji. And certainly when Mr. Watson and I began today, we did talk about trends and predictability and financial capacity and so forth. And and I think you've hit all of those things bang on, uh and certainly a maintenance budget. It costs money, but it's necessary to spend in order to exist and to maintain our level of service, which as you've indicated, has been extremely uh quick with the turnover. When I speak to other mayors and they say, what, you took a call from whom and you actually acted on that? So we do have a very high level of turnover. Experts to carry out studies who determine the viability as we remain mindful of the pillars of our strategic uh plan while providing that consistent level of service. So there are purposes for why we do have these uh the these studies done. Human resources makes sense, our population, our subdivisions, the diversity of our housing stock is all changing. We have to have staff in order to make sure that we are able to provide that level of service. So uh as we grow, as the town grows physically or population-wise and with the housing stock, we we need to have people here to plow the roads, to do the work, to provide the amenities. Uh the non-discretionary costs, we have no control over those. The uh, you know, the the power bills, the gas, uh infrastructure cost tools to do our jobs. And then, of course, supporting legislation that comes down from other areas, whether it's federal or or provincial. So I'm going to turn this over now to uh to council. But certainly, uh you know, all the things that you've hit on are things that are so important and critical to the development of our town. Counselor, bigger, please.
Just a, thank you, Your Worship, just a point of order. Would it be prudent to consider postponing question period till after the lunch break, given the time? And I noticed the deputy mayor is out of the room currently and I just, I'll leave that to your discretion.
That's. Beth, are you okay with that?
Yep.
And no one is, yep. I guess everybody is, so you're off the hook for a few minutes. So how long is our lunch break? Our lunch break is thirty minutes.
Have to keep my tie on?
Uh yes, lunch is here. Uh so it's twelve twenty now, so we'll return about ten to one.
Thank you.